Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May 25, 2022. This is the Gloucester School Committee meeting at the Gloucester High School. Consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort is made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during all communications to be recognized as speaking. I will state the permission of Gloucester Public Schools as for all students to be successful and engage life long learners. It is with great sadness that I have to acknowledge the events that happened in Texas yesterday where many children and two adults' lives were taken. So I ask that we keep these families and everybody directly impacted in our thoughts and prayers, and I ask that you join me in a moment of silence. We will now have the soot to quiet. Next up is oral communications. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and when matters may be referred to proper assembly. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the superintendent. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. So if there is anybody who is in attendance that would like to speak under oral communications, now it is your opportunity. Okay, seeing that, we move on to recognitions. It's busy time.
We have a number of them. If someone starts with one, I'm going to load some photos and maybe video of another one.
I'll start with the Drum Fest, which happened last week, and many kids performed really kind of some pretty cool musical skits or numbers on stage at Gloucester High School. And I think it was a really nice event for students to have kind of a casual way of performance. That was great.
I wanted to recognize the Senior Safety Awareness Day that happened, I think, on Wednesday at the high school? Thursday at the high school?
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Which was yesterday.
I want to recognize Officer Scola and Dean Howes and Ted Casa from Bruce Tar's office and all the staff and everyone who really put together a really engaging series of demonstrations about safety, about what it's like to drive impaired, what happens to you when a rollover when you're not wearing a seatbelt. They made it fun, and I think it was a really, really important message to everyone, every driver, not just seniors in high schools, every single one. So I wanted to commend and recognize that.
Okay. Just wanted to recognize, and I'm not sure if they were already recognized, but the Junior ROTC Award Ceremony that we attended. Phenomenal event. Really impressed by the students there and the leaders and the work that those students put in, not only in the schools but in the community. So I wanted to recognize that.
I don't know if this is going to work, but I've got two short videos to play. Last week at Shailin Lou in Rockport, the O'Malley Jazz Band opened up for the GHS Jazz Band, and the O'Malley Jazz Band made a surprise appearance, which was fantastic. I'll see if this is, this will work. I don't know if it will. The curtains open, right? I don't know if anyone's going to be like, here it is. I don't know if it's going to work at all. Apparently, of course, they don't. It's trying to work. Well, I'll show just then just two pictures. What was here? So that is the O'Malley Jazz Band led by their student director. Name I don't remember. Maybe the medias here does, but sorry.
Sean Buckley?
Sean Buckley, yep. Thank you very much. Student director.
Yes, Gary Merle going ahead tonight.
And then, and so, I mean, saxophones, clarinets, trombones, the trombone section was pretty hot. Okay, drummers, that sort of thing. Everybody got a guitarist. And then, that's the video that will show. And then, and then after that was the GHS Jazz Band. A great, just a great, both fantastic performance. You can see the curtains was up. It was a beautiful night. And I haven't been to many concerts at Shailin Lou, but the place is rocking. There was so much energy enthusiasm from the sort of masses, and people were so happy to be there and it really brought everyone a lot of joy. So thanks to both Carl Jimenez and Cole Lundquist, the directors of both bands. They clearly have a lot of fun working together and just developing a lot of fantastic additions. So fantastic night. Another, I'll do another O'Malley one unless Lynn wants to about Evening of Excellence last night.
Oh, sure, I can jump in. Evening of Excellence, this is our return. The last one was in the spring of 2019. It was my first year here, so it was a different experience for me. So last night, we did it a little differently. Teachers stayed in their classrooms, and students were invited to guide their parents or family members whether they brought through their work for the year. We also invited fifth grade families to come and explore, get a sense of what was going on at O'Malley and what experiences they would have. So the stage band played in the commons for about 45 minutes, so people could meander through for that. I told by Mr. Destino, who's been there longer than I, that this was the best turnout we've ever had for a night like this. And it was a little uncertain as to whether it would come to fruition with our COVID bubble that we felt was very recently, but it was great. The teachers did very different things. In some places, there were most of all the halls. In some places, teachers had presentations. At other places, there were activities set up for parents to get involved in. One particularly memorable one was seventh grade, Mr. White's science class. He had hung a bowling ball from the ceiling and had the adults sit in a chair and pull the bowling ball close to their face and then swing it. And of course, it comes back. It's the laws of physics. Say it will never come back farther than where it started. So of course, the adults got a little moment of panic as they weren't really sure if they trusted those laws of physics. But it was, there was a lot of, a lot of energy, a lot of great enthusiasm, a lot of positive comments at the end of the night. And we hope to do it again similarly next year and give some thought to what went well and what maybe needs a little brush up or revision and go from there. But staff did a great job.
For only two times, I've seen those parking lots as full as last night. It was for the hockey playoffs this year, and then the academic evening of excellence. So just a great collaboration. It was a great event last night. And you went, and your staff put it together.
I guess I have a few over here. So I will, Ben had talked about the O'Malley Jazz Band and the Doc Siders last Wednesday. Tonight, we have the chorus at the Shailin Lou, where we probably don't have a lot of people on the call today. They're probably at Shailin Lou having the chorus. Serenaded them in that beautiful location. But I would echo what Ben said about last Wednesday. And I know there will be recording of this evening. I did check in with Mr. Lundquist. So we'll all keep an eye out for the recording from tonight. So in addition to that, we have some great news from the spring sports season. Our spring track team, the girls' team, won the Northeastern Conference Lynch Division Championship with a 4-0 dual meet record against the other division teams. This past Saturday, they competed in the NEC Championship meet, and the following students finished first place. We had Colby Rotford in the 400 meter and Carolyn McKinnon in the 800 meter. And the girls' 4x400 meter relay team came in first and broke our school record. And that team is made up of Sky Shalino, Rose Grillo, Carolyn McKinnon, and Darcy Muller. Over 24 of our athletes at GHS qualified for their respective events at the state meet. You have to get a certain score to make it that far. So more than two dozen of our kids did that. And that meet is this Thursday and Saturday in Hingham. And while I'm mentioning Hingham, triumphantly, our sail team beat Hingham today and won the state championship in sailing. Going into today, they had a 9-0 record. So now 10-0, the best in our school's history. And the students on the team are Olivia Hogan-Lopez, AJ Lewis, Ryan Lewis, and Alicia Hogan-Lopez. So state champions today appropriately in sailing. And always good, somebody from the South Shore always going to beat Hingham. We, tomorrow night, we have Academic Recognition Night. So folks are able to make it to Academic Recognition Night. So we'll be celebrating hundreds of kids tomorrow night. And I got a sneak peek at the, at the agenda. And it's really exciting to see, you know, how far kids have come and some kids who have grown since COVID and being back in person this year. And it really turned things around and being triumphant performances. We also see, you know, how there is a focus where students are really excelling. So it's going to be a great night tomorrow night. The last thing I'm going to mention is Senior Spirit Week. And today was Anything But a Backpack Day, which was pretty, it was pretty awesome. So students brought things to carry their books and their Chromebook and everything other than a backpack. So we saw baby carriage. We saw lots of lobster pots. Like one student says, "My dad will kill me if I bang up my lobster pot," that they cook lobster in. But she took it anyway today. We saw guitar cases with books instead of the guitar inside, vacuum cleaners. Parents who might be on the call, listening tonight, might want to check and make sure they got everything back that they liked today. But it was pretty, it was really fun. It's a great kind of spirit and bonding. Kids had a lot of fun with it this week. And each of the days have been very, they've been very creative. Friday, they'll be over at Stageboard Park for their senior picnic, which is really exciting as well. And the distribution of yearbooks. So lots coming still, but that's this week for the seniors. So this is some of what's going on at GHS.
The seniors are completing their classes.
Tomorrow. Some of you know, a couple of us in this room are parents of seniors. So it's a big, it's a big day tomorrow to have the last class. I'm in denial with it, but.
More evidence that we are hurtling towards the end of the school year. A lot of work is still all across the board, but we are, it's coming with me.
First, I just, in light of your moment of silence, I do want to just acknowledge the people in our school buildings who are continuously asked to hold space for these difficult conversations for both our students, our staff, and our parents. You show up time and time again, and you're processing it at the same time as everybody else. So I just want to acknowledge how important your role is in helping to communicate clearly and effectively how important safety is in our buildings. So I first just want to acknowledge that. And then, second, I want to acknowledge Cole Lundquist. Is that how you say his name? I just want to make sure I got it right. Jessica Kirk. I know staff show up to student events all the time, but I went to my daughter's piano recital with Alexandra Grace, and I happened to be sitting behind, or in front of, I'm sorry, these two teachers who came to support their students who were performing that night. And their enthusiasm was just infectious. They literally clapped and cheered and stood for every single person performing on that stage that night, including a four-year-old that got up there. I joked with them that they were there really just there to recruit and scout upcoming talent. But they just.
I talked to Cole, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, there are some that we want to make sure we get because they're incredible. But they just had so much enthusiasm and excitement for students on stage. So I just want to acknowledge just their presence there.
And following that, I just want to point out that later we'll be accepting a pretty large grant from Gloucester Education Foundation. That is for these early musical lessons for kids to kind of continue to build that next. Excellent recognitions. With us tonight, we do not have the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council. The last week, last meeting was the last, and in the fall, we'll end up with, we'll have to do people from the senior class. Next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing that. I move that we approve the consent agenda. Ray, may we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Berga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Jefferson Plancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Ms. Denio?
Yes.
And Ms. France?
Yes.
Without objection, I would like us to consider taking the item in action, approve the superintendent's recognition to appoint Amy Pasquarello as the Assistant Superintendent effective October 1, 2022.
Great, thank you very much. So tonight, I seek your approval on my appointment of Amy Pasquarello to be Gloucester's Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction effective October 1. I say a few things about Amy, that's okay. We note Amy, her energy, intelligence, leadership, and excellent works, and she became principal at East Gloucester in 2015. Prior coming to Gloucester, Ms. Pasquarello was an assistant principal in new marine puberty. She taught fourth and fifth grade in Connecticut and Virginia, and also was media specialist. She has degrees from UMass Amherst and New York, Virginia. She has served as an adjunct professor at Simmons College, working with experienced teachers supporting their growth and development. More importantly, she's been doing a fantastic job here in Gloucester. The Assistant Superintendent position is a difficult job with tremendous breadth of responsibilities. Ms. Pasquarello has demonstrated excellence across many domains throughout her career as an educator. First and foremost, Ms. Pasquarello is all about the students. The well-being of students and the need to prepare them for the next step in their lives drives her work every day. Her love of her students comes through every morning. Now she greets children with a warm hello and a bright smile that lets them know she is so happy to see them. Next, Amy Pasquarello is the Bojek Gloucester. Like many people who come to Gloucester, she has followed the city hard for our families, for our students and her colleagues. She wants to work in our fair city for many reasons. Working side by side with coaches, Greg Bach, and East Gloucester teachers, Ms. Pasquarello has helped lead the incredible curriculum and instruction work that you learn has been so important to our elementary schools, excelling over the last five, five and more years. She has deep knowledge of what excellent instruction is and how a rich, engaging curriculum supports teachers to do their best. Amy was an integral, Amy was an integral part of our reopening team in the summer of 2020. It was one of the first to say that we would make it through the entire year of closing schools. She told me that early and often.
In July.
And it worked out. With Principal Fusco, she has led the effort to replace the East Gloucester School with new building from making the original case for a new school, the design process, building community support, and giving input on just about everything, from paint colors to the playground. Ms. Pasquarello has been, has been essential in helping to build new school in Gloucester. Just today, we're looking at colors again. You also know Ms. Pasquarello is someone who doesn't shy away from the most challenging work. She handles difficult conversations with care and passion, whether she's working with students, staff, or family members. During the interview process, Ms. Pasquarello demonstrated to the teachers, coaches, and principals involved she's a great listener, who will do the work to make sure she understands the strengths and challenges to face across the district, from preschool through high school. Both committees were unanimous in supporting her for the job. I consider Amy Pasquarello as a colleague who I can rely on for good counsel, thoroughness, attention to detail, and very, very good judgment. I'm so glad to appoint her to be our next Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and urge you to approve by point.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve Amy Pasquarello as our next Assistant Superintendent. Discussion. Just on the transition time, so Greg.
I can give you a lot of number details. All of them, if I can get, I'm happy to do that. This is a good time. So we will, so as folks know, East Gloucester and Veterans are consolidating into a new school that opens. Also, Mr. Greg Bach has, the reason we're talking, right, Mr. Greg Bach is going to be resigning, retiring, sorry, at the end of December. I intend to post for Assistant Principal for East Gloucester as soon as possible. Ms. Pasquarello and the Assistant Superintendent for East Gloucester will open the school together. So Amy will continue to be the principal at East Gloucester until the beginning of October. I guess we'll make sure the school gets off on a really great start. Then she'll come over to the district office and work with Greg. So we'll have a couple of months of really good transition for the two of them. Going back to East Gloucester second, Assistant Principal then will work with Mr. Fusco, and they would leave both schools. Really, you know, primarily one, one in each school, but it would allow both of them to spend time at both schools, gain no staff more deeply, and continually the consolidation process. It is, Amy will have a full job of her own, but it's also likely she'll continue to support both schools, or she'll continue to pick paint colors. I'm not getting her way on that.
Yeah, do the videos.
Yeah, do the videos, exactly. But that's, that's the basic concept. Of course, it doesn't work out, but the basic idea is that. And then, Assistant Principal and Principal Fusco would continue on together as a team, as administrative team at the school.
So Greg and Amy would be October, November, December.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on this all. So, been on the committee for 14 years, and I can say this is probably one of the most bittersweet votes if I ever had to take it. Brendan, get a moment. When you came back from Rockport, that was a really good highlight for the school. And I was glad that you came back. And very sad, but happy for you that you are making choices. So it's good for you in leaving our district. Like you've even our district in extremely good hands with Amy. I've gotten to know Amy over the last many years as my granddaughter lives at our school. And I could not be more impressed with the story tonight. So I will, I will support this.
I have to echo what Melissa said. I remember Greg from his days as the IT director. Moving over to the principal at East Gloucester School. And since you're in. I had a sixteenth of an inch more hair than. But, so Amy, you have big shoes to fill, but you, I'm pretty confident you're up to the task. So congratulations.
I will also say, it is very, very sweet. If anybody loves Gloucester, we have administrators and people in place that truly deal with Greg. Just, you know, probably stop and say. So Amy, we're happy to have you. We'd like you to embrace Gloucester as your own. We'd like to see your career progress with this district.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I say one thing about the transition?
Sure.
I couldn't be more happy because this is a, it's a rare opportunity to not have a transition that involves essentially a note on the desk and maybe an hour of, here's where that is, here are these files, good luck. That's pretty typical if you even get any transition. Yeah, so that's pretty common. That's not good for a district at all. And I think it's just a, you know, it's a rare opportunity for two people to work really well together, to continue working really well together, but also to provide the best transition possible. And that doesn't mean doing things the way I've done them at all. I don't have, particularly after the last two years we've just been through, there are a number of things that need to be restarted, and it's a great opportunity to restart them and also rethink them. And so I'm really hopeful that we can take out some of the things that had to be put on a back burner and build them from scratch this fall. And having that time to take them out and not own the way they were, but just to actually look and think about, okay, 2022 and 23, what's the best way to do this? And I'm completely confident that the two of us working together are going to be able to do that. And it's just such a rare opportunity. That, I wasn't feeling great about finishing up after the last couple of years because it's, it's been, there's been disarray in a lot of things that we used to do. But I'm really happy about the thought of launching things with somebody who can take them and redesign together. So she's fantastic, such heart, has done a great job at East Gloucester, but has been a real leader in her team as well. And fantastic.
Like that, she went down in slides to East Gloucester?
I don't know if she went down the slides on East Gloucester. I tore up a lot of suits. Great choice.
Okay, Mayor, can we vote, please?
Mayor Berga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Jefferson Plancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. France?
Yes.
Honored, and I know I have big shoes to fill. I'm going to give him a shot, and I'm honored to move into my next role. So thank you.
And it'll be the one time at a school committee meeting that he gets to leave. Not feel bad about it.
So I get to leave?
Yes, they do.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay if you want to, but not yet. It's a career.
Take it back to you. Take it back to us. I'm going to go, but I'll be here many long nights in the future. I'm sure. I look forward to it, too. Thank you.
There's a, there's a Pasquarello who's viewing. And that person could go to if they wanted.
Thank you.
So, continue on with the.
We're going to continue on with the liberation that education issues. And we will have the school improvement plans for O'Malley and Henson Middle School and Gloucester.
Can you present? You want me to present? What's better for you?
It's better for me if you present.
Can you just get it, get there?
So all of you have both the full plan and the presentation also? Great, okay.
Let's begin with I.
Yep, it's okay.
Thanks for having me. And more is here joining to, as she's my tag team partner on implementation for the most part of the plan. So we, we are choosing, as I think I've talked about before, to sort of stay a course. This will be our third, we're entering our third year in sustainable improvement. And what we've tried to do over the last couple of years is streamline our focus further and further. So while there are still a lot of items in this plan, I feel like this year, we crafted a good direction[1735.11]
that, that will allow us to really stay very focused and, and stay on target with some initiatives that will help our, our kids grow in their performance or achievement, their community attachment, et cetera. Um, so, the, um, would you go to the, the first slide, please? Um, so this, I guess we would call an infographic in tech world. I, I created this really when, when I was working with staff on the whole thing, just because, you know, the teachers as a whole don't look at school improvement as nearly as frequently or as in-depth as instructional leadership team, and certainly not as administration does. So I wanted to make sure, and this is one of, one of the things I think is really important for O'Malley in terms of sustainability. There were always going back to remembering why we're doing what we're doing and how can that dots connect. So, um, so we are in sustainable improvement, there are four turnaround practices. Our plan is based from the Sustainable Improvement Plan initially on the four turnaround practices. And as of this year, we, we created the three focus areas that represent those. So we've got professional collaboration, which involves shared leadership accountability, some other things. Improving student learning, which last year was focused on literacy, this year adds math and some pedagogical pieces. And student engagement, which is focused on making connections with kids and, and having clear expectations for them. Um, so this shows you how our three focus areas break up into four goals for us. And then we'll talk about the details of each of those four goals. Can you go for it and we'll, we'll go through each? So, um, professional collaboration is the first focus area, and our, our goal under that is that we have clear focus core values, which we've established over the last year and a half as still sales, expanding from just community into academics and bonding that all together. Um, our mission and vision is still a little bit tied to some of the past efforts that we've done, so that's, um, going to be one of our areas, um, to, to craft. And in order to do that, w- we feel that it's really important to have a clear instructional focus. So you'll see as we get into the, the green goals at the center, that there are some very specific items that are gonna guide our, our articulating a statement of instructional focus. It's important that, that all of us can articulate it like this, just, we have these three topics, professional collaboration, improving student learning, and student engagement, those are the three, everyone should know the cold, um, parents, kids, staff. Getting into our instructional focus, we should all know very simply what we're focused on. So it's a really important, like a mission and vision, that we have that as a very simple statement that we all understand and is clear. Uh, so that's gonna be our first test, is establishing what, what is our instructional focus based on what we've been working on for the couple of years? And what are our efforts are going toward this year? How do we articulate that in a way that keeps it at the top of our heads? After that, of course, it's self, it's, it's, it's assessing our progress with it. We need to know, are we staying true to the focus that we have attached to, you know? Is, does this, you know, really interesting shiny professional development camp that's come along, does it, is it going to be value-added for the instructional focus that's gonna help our kids? And we always have to stay on track and on target with that. Um, we also, in terms of the collaboration piece, we've been spending, um, a lot of time over the last couple of years in our student review teams, which are meeting times when the house teams collaborate, it's a whole child type of environment. We've been using protocols and we've been working on student success plans. Now it's time to take that next step into grade level meetings. So we also wanna make sure that we're using our time as efficiently as possible, systemic approach, using protocols, determining what data we're gonna look at, how people bring data to those discussions. So when we're planning curriculum, it's all focused and systematic. And then third, the, the last piece of this is that the, um, the current data teams, which meet fall, winter, spring, will expand into the grade level curriculum conversations with data dudes there. We're also adding, um, our special educators formally into the data team process, um, in our ELL, ELL teachers as well, so that we're, we've got all the stakeholders on the team who contribute meaningfully to what we wanna do to help all of our students.
We have questions, are we asking now or waiting till the end?
You and the chair.
No, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I just didn't know what the process was.
Can you answer the question?
Okay. Um, so I just have a quick question on the focus.
Yeah.
So, um, what type of oversight will there be, if any, um, in the classrooms to assure that all the teachers are, have that focus and that that focus is the same, you know, is, are there gonna be walkthroughs or, uh, peer teacher to teacher? Or, um, support from the coaches or anything like that? What, what is gonna assure that, um, everyone knows what that focus is and is consistent?
Great question, when we get to the next section, there's actually some actions around that.
Okay, I read it, but I didn't think I saw that.
That's okay.
Okay.
Um, the, so the intent is for.
PLCs, is that what it was?
We, well, we have, the PLCs are basically the, I mean, working with the student review teams and adding the PLC structure to grade level meetings is part of it. So having a process that, um, the teachers are using is the first part. But the other piece that, that you're alluding to is, is how, who's giving the feedback? So that's where the assistant principals, Maura and I, will be in. And our goal is to give feedback specific to the instructional focus and the, the actions in the plan. Um, and so that is, and, and not just feedback, observation, evaluation wise, but, um, support. So how do we get to have those conversations where we're collaborating to say, you know, I saw this, have you tried that? And, and asking questions that, that keep bringing back people back to the instructional focus and the strategies we're using and the PD that we provide, et cetera.
And learning best practices from that process.
Exactly, exactly. We've talked, um, informally, there, there are some peer observation pieces in place, you asked about that as well. Uh, we're not at a place yet where we want to jump to, let's put a formal peer observation process in place, that there is an interest to do that on staff, um, we've talked about it in the, in the instructional leadership team, we've talked about it on site council, and, um, it's, it's one of those, first, we wanna make sure we define what our high quality best practices are. Then we wanna have a more formal process, so when people are going into classrooms, you know, we've defined what we're looking for. And we, we have some models that we can provide to say, yeah, go here to see this particular best practice that's working well.
Can I ask, cause I know when trying something new, it's good to have a strong start, right? So that's why I just, my question is being more to, okay, we're gonna do this.
Right.
What's hitting the ground and how's that gonna work? So, thank you.
Sure. Next slide.
Oh, sure. And this, I think this was sort of embedded in what you were saying, but I just wanna make sure I'm clear. So, you know, I guess where are the best practices coming from? I mean, how are you determining, right, there's, you know, so we're going in and everyone wants, we want everyone to have this, this, the same focus and the same. But we don't make a ton of sense, and where's that, where's the origin?
Do you mind if we go through the next slide or two and then I can speak to that? Because that's where the content is, how we're developing. And you might have a follow-up question, but that might be more helpful.
That sounds great.
Okay, sure. All right, so, um, the second section is the, the second goal, it's, um, cohesive instructional focus, which again, we've articulated in our collaboration roles. But here's where it starts to lay out in terms of the practices that we're gonna integrate and, and where it's coming from. Um, so the first one, uh, refining our school-wide structures and systems for UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning, and culturally responsive teaching practices, which is the models that are at a Hammond practice that's being implemented, um, at the high school. Um, we have done professional development on both of those things, and they, and, and actually, James and I have done some discussing of how they dovetail. So what we wanna do is go back, these are both research-based practices that are, that are proven successful. And there are ways for, for us to provide curriculum in any subject or practices in any subject, that we can create some universal, um, maybe a bad word, since it's already in there, but some consistent practices across the school where we have a language, how we go about things. Uh, so that's the pedagogical piece that we'll be looking for. What does it look like from, from UDL when you engage a student or from Hammond when you would guide a student? Um, and, and what does that look like in a classroom? And, and when I come in, hey, I saw this, this is great, ask some questions about that. Then in this section, we go into, um, literacy. So this year, we had a literacy review committee that, that Maura ran in a spectacular manner, with the practice that, that would, that will follow for math as well. And, and so the, they looked at curriculum alignment with standards, um, and they began researching, best practices and programs and resources, meet the standard of research-based or evidence-based. So it's from the, it's from what works clearinghouse and some other, they're vetted, um, practices and products that other schools have found successful, they're reading student needs that align with the standards, they're, they're gonna keep us on track. Do you wanna speak to where you're going next with this, with the pilot and things like that, so go ahead.
We've used a lot of the resources that the, the state has put out, uh, they've done a great job over the past couple of years of really helping to melt how you, how you go through a curriculum review process. This Department of Education has created a website called Curate, where they're vetting all kinds of products for, for multiple content areas and rating them on, you know, effectiveness with students, culturally relevant, um, materials, how engaging they are, if, if they're incorporating best, best practices, uh, the whole gamut of things that you're looking for. Um, and we've coupled that with Ed Reports, which is a natural, um, database which does the same thing. So we're going through that whole process, and we've been to identify four potential resources that we think meet, um, the criteria that we've set forward, that we've worked with, the district and the state on, and also have aligned with the priorities of the curriculum review team. The, the curriculum review team has, has identified about 10 non-negotiables that think we really need to see and, and the resources that we're looking at. Um, so we're in the process now of, of doing a deep dive into those, those four specific resources with the goal to narrow it to two, to hopefully do some trial in, in the fall.
So if I'm understanding, Curate and Ed Reports helps you sort of review some curriculum that you might wanna turn. Um, and so the four that you narrowed it down to, do they intersect well with what's being piloted at the, at the elementary schools? And what's already happening at the high school?
Yes.
Okay, and so that, where, there's like a very clear cohesive.
There's a lot of alignment.
Okay.
Some of them may be the same products, not, not necessarily, but, um, you know, we're making sure that that transition, both into the middle school and into the high school, is critical, so the more seamless that we can make it.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I recognize there's a ton of change happening on every level, right, in terms of curriculum. So, just wanna make sure that was wrong.
Can I mention one thing on that? Um, I also wanna mention that Maura has attended, um, the, um, elementary ELLA pilot meetings, and in fact, saw all of the deliberations that have been part of, you know, very much involved with that. So, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will select the same curriculum that the elementary is, but she's, she's been very much involved with that process, been really great to average, she's connected with our coaches at the elementary level too, so. I'm not at all worried about that, uh, where in the past we might have had a disconnect, they're right on it, so.
It's, it's really important that we design a K to 12 to 10, but even whether it's six different products, three different products, whatever that is, it, it has to be, it has to be regular collaboration coordination with what's going on below and above. Otherwise, it's, it's too disjointed for the kids.
Just from my perspective, I'm afraid from your perspective, um, uh, just with, you know, the budget this year, which will put more efficient in, into the operating budget. That's what the coordination is talked about, as Greg just talked about, absolutely could not have happened. This, this year, but almost at, at the end of the year, with the structure we had in O'Malley. So, uh, you know, having, uh, more, have more, and more in that position, okay, um, allows for that, and that's as you described, it's, yeah.
You know, along those lines, Greg, you created this curriculum mapping philosophy that you still have, I think? Remember years and years ago, we started with this curriculum mapping to make sure that all the elementary schools. Didn't that lead into elementary and then high school levels as well? I thought.
We, we ended up, uh, yes, we did it at each level, but it, it has remained somewhat discreet at each level. And this is the first really sustained coordinated connection between the two. It's a really exciting to have Maura and Lynn, um, and her staff working on this and, uh, working together, so it's, it's good. So though we were doing it, it was generally independent, it was independent, and, and really a good process coming.
So just following up on that, sorry, just, so, um, cause we, we did hear so much about the process to get us to Whitney with, uh, at the elementary schools, and how, you know, the, you know, huge amount of work that went into pilot that. But now you're at the point of you have four curriculum, one now to two, and then would the piloting phase be this coming school year? With the hope of, of implementing the following year, or I'm just wondering about.
Well, we, we are working out the timeline, I think a lot of that is going to be impacted by what resources we do select. And, and, um, I've been meeting with all of the representatives from all the different resources that we're looking at to learn from their experiences about how it's worked in other districts. We, most of the people that we're talking to are also working with many other districts in the area. And so they've been able to demonstrate what's worked for them, um, and what timelines they use. They all have slightly different timelines, so I think it's really going to depend on where we land, um, in, in June, how we wanna move forward. But I, I'd like to get it in the hands of everybody by the middle of next, of the next school year. That's physically and, and academically appropriate.
And, and just because we heard, you know, from, from the elementary process, we heard, you know, you can't start a new thing all at once, you know, like, you know, that we had to have gradations, right? So I just wonder, O'Malley, since it's one school, but obviously that's bigger than this individual. I mean, are you able, once you make that decision, to sort of implement, or is it also gonna be gradations?
It's bigger, but it's department-based, so, so that helps us. Whereas every single elementary teacher teaches literacy, or, or English Language Arts, everybody teaches literacy. But English Language Arts specifically, you know, at the middle school level, you've got a, a much smaller number of people. So it's, it is easier to get everybody together, do the training, um, and, and have that dialogue and collaboration to move it forward. Ideally, like Maura said, we're hoping for mid-year for terms two and four, but it will depend on, you know, what the resources are and what's involved with the, the training and implementation. Thank you.
And which also means that, as, as, as we look into, you know, if they're starting in the math process as well, you could never, ever, ever do both at the same time in, in other schools. I mean, we, you know, tuned in both, in many other resources, it's a little different, but, but you really couldn't. But in middle school, we have a factor.
Um, so the, the final piece with regard to literacy is that we, um, well, there are two pieces. We, this year, we started coordinating and building color language, we use two column notes across the school, across all subjects. Next year, we'll be taking on a, the next, we don't even know what that is yet, but there will be another practice, evidence-based, research-based, effective that, that applies to all subject areas with regard to literacy. Um, and finally, the second year of our literacy intervention class, which is the tier-two, um, support, which we showed last time, at the media report, where our kids have made a significant amount of growth as compared to kids who are taking that class. So, uh, so getting that in place, uh, for the next, uh, round, you know, increasing the expertise of the person running the class, the resources we're using, et cetera, to continue to expand that. And then we switched it up, um, and math really looks like literacy looks this year. So it's, it's starting from scratch again with the alignment to the standards, taking a look at, um, which, uh, skills are across other subject areas, like the ones that I've mentioned in the plan, are, are the problem-solving, critical thinking. Those practices apply to most subjects, specifically the sciences and, and some things more directly. So it'll be a question of, you know, where can we most, um, directly apply practice of mathematical standards and, and focus areas and thinking skills that will help move forward all of our kids' mathematics skills, whether it's math class or not. We'll be looking at the unit revision, the scope and sequence, the, the same way we did with literacy. Uh, we do have, uh, um, a wonderful math intervention teacher who has accepted the position. Um, she's got a lot of experience, and, um, so she's enthusiastic about coming on board, and that will help us. It's, it's always great to have, you want your best teacher in an elementary class, right? So, um, so it will be great to have her, um, as a strong person in that, working with Maura, working with me, building that tier-two program the way we do with the literacy intervention. And then, um, part of this that you alluded to, and, and well, actually, a couple of you did with that accountability piece. So having, um, for the administrative team, a, a schedule that is consistent, we're in class, we're doing observations, and the observations are specific to whatever it is we're working on, what is, what are the five points of the instructional focus and, and our, and our values and the things that we've agreed on, what did we just do a professional development on that we wanna see implemented on? What practices are we sharing, uh, that are intended to be school-wide and, and giving very specific feedback on that and providing support if people need, uh, further instruction and support, uh, resources to do that implementation. That's something that's been very hard for us. We, you know, having Maura has been helpful, having, um, Brian and Desa, uh, join us as a, a third assistant principal. Her time has been helpful, and that's what we want, we want to build that into a routine now, so that we can make sure that we're where we need to be, that, that we're not working reactively to all of the, you know, the crazy, the lovable craziness of middle school. But are also able to spend the time that's needed in the classrooms to really be, not just visible, but be effective and be able to coach. Cause that, that really is the, the biggest part of an administrator's role, is not the evaluation supervision top-down, it's the, how do we support the, the literacy? It's the, how do we support literacy and ask questions, questions, do you have, what can I, what can I do to help you grow with what we're trying to do?
So you brought up evaluations, I had a question on that. So during the evaluation process going into next year, has that happened yet when the teachers pick their professional goal and their personal goal?
No, they do that in the fall.
They do that in the fall. Do you see maybe a recommendation from your team that the professional goal maybe has some points that are in what you're presenting to us tonight?
Yeah, we actually, we actually did that this year. Yeah, so this year, one of the things that we did was create some draft smart goals that, you know, we offered up, went through, people chose or didn't choose them. But I always guide the faculty to craft their goals in alignment with, with our identified actions. So whatever is we're trying to accomplish, they need to contribute. We've spent a good amount of time over this, these last few months, getting feedback from the staff about our three focus areas and the practices that we've got in and what they're thinking we need to work on, what they would like to see in it. So there's a whole articulation of ideas that they have for the kinds of PD they might want or the ways to use time or how that, how we can move forward with interdisciplinary kinds of things in the building that, that will help move our literacy across the school forward, things like that. So, so the idea of generating those conversations together and then putting the broad strokes of the plan that is an umbrella for them to fit those things in individually allows them, when they come in in the fall, to feel hopefully that, you know, they've got some options that came from them that fit because we're all going the same direction in that section.
Can you go back one?
Yeah.
Three, right?
Yeah, so the, the third of the goal is still under improving student learning. This one is, is more discreet. It's related to common formative and summative assessments and progress monitoring. This is where the data teams come in and where we, we have some common assessments, primarily summative. And we wanna make sure that they're, they're common everywhere. We want to make sure that, that in addition to the summative assessments, we have formative assessments where check-ins along the way before you get to the big assessment that determines whether the students learned what they're supposed to learn in the unit. And then continuing to use the Star 360 Math and Reading Assessment in the fall, winter, spring to help give us the information moving toward, like I said earlier, involving the Yale teachers, involving special ed teachers, involving that data to really move, take that next step towards being able to think about individual kids and their plan of program.
Is that me?
That's you. So the student engagement is, it really has two problems. It's really making sure that our approach to conduct challenges is consistent. The kids have clear expectations, staff have clear expectations, everyone knows the process. And then the, the second part of that is, is really where I think you really make inroads, which is the community piece. So focusing on, this year, we started regular community meetings, expanding that, making it more consistent, building in different kinds of team-building activities that the kids can do to feel connected. Moving toward restorative practices, continuing to move in that direction as opposed to punitive. This year, we added the PACE program so that we were able to have kids out of community to serve a consequence when necessary and keep them in school and have them do reflective work, meet with a counselor, be here, get their schoolwork done instead of being on the couch playing video games, which is not helpful for anybody. I did recently just read that video games are good for your brain. Different tangent, so, yeah. Not social media, not social media, but video games. At any rate, you know, and then, and then doing a better job at sharing data and talking about data. So we've, we've had for a couple of years a referral form that we use. It's just a simple Google form that it's similar to the Swiss system that was used in PBIS. But it's, you know, if we get the graphs, we get the data, we can look at the patterns of what kinds of infractions we're experiencing, what the responses have been, what's effective, what's not. We haven't, this year, we did a really good job in almost all of the houses of getting those referrals in there. Sometimes it felt like too many notifications on days. But, you know, we have it in there now that the next step is really making sure we're doing regular, you know, once a month, the house teams are looking at, okay, what kinds of things are we struggling with? Thing that comes up most is cell phones, so that's gonna be a big one. We have a very clear policy, but it's very challenging to enforce consistently on a regular basis. Kids are attached to their phones and it's a problem. So, so I envision, given the amount of feedback from staff on that, that we'll be putting together a subcommittee next year potentially to take a look at that policy, to see if we need to make changes on it or at least for the start, do better communication with families about the expectations, et cetera.
When you're looking at that policy, you discussed also the connection between iPhones and, you know, you know, watches, smartwatches, that kind of thing.
Yes.
Would that be also beautiful?
Yes, and I think there's nothing about smartwatches in the plan at this point.
Yeah.
So there's the question of, you know, how that plays in and that kind of thing, so.
If anybody needs to get in touch with their children, contact the office, right? There's no need.
Yeah, well, that, that's the thing nowadays, you know, since, since more than a year ago, we have a phone in every classroom that dials out. So there's not a safety issue around needing to access a phone to get in touch with everybody from out of the building. And, you know, so we, we need to do a little bit of PR around it. Being very convenient for families to text their kids during the day, but not the most helpful thing with regard to preventing distraction in, during the school day. Cause there's, there's too much, you know.
Being a phone pocket, things they have to put in front of the class.
Yep, yeah. Kids have all kinds of reasons why they don't wanna do that. So that's the place, that those are the kinds of things, and they're, there are some good options.
You see, you see it somewhere, places you have a place to have your phone, so it's not with you while you're working.
Right.
It's a locked, you know, locker or whatever.
Sure. Yeah, they're supposed to be in our lockers already, whole rooms. Supposed to be is critical in that sense, so. We have some more to do.
I guess I'm just curious, I worked for a district in the past that allowed students to have their phones on them.
Yep.
Due to safety issues. I'm curious, I don't necessarily agree with that, but I'm curious.
For kids or cell phone?
So like, in the case of an active shooter, they found that it was helpful for students to have access to their cell phones. And so I'm, you know, I'm all for at the beginning, you know, you walk into the class, you put it on the desk. I guess I'm just wondering if you see any reason why a student should have their phone on them.
It's a hard question for a tech person. Cause I used to, I, I, I've kind of turned a corner on this. Phones are great, but they're computers. And I think over the last several years, we have turned a, not a good corner into it's, there is too much. I don't wanna use the word addiction, cause that's a very technical word. There's too much attachment to them and there is too much, there's, there's an inability for adults and kids to leave it out there. And it is impacting, the kids cannot, some of the kids cannot put it down, put it away, have it out of their reach. They don't even wanna put it in a bin or in a pocket because, you know, someone else's fingerprints might have been on there, they might touch it. But it's more, they just don't wanna be away from it. So I don't anticipate it being an easy transition if we were to go to a main cellphone policy. It's also hard to prove this, but to your question, I don't see any need for kids to have them. In fact, when we talk about any kind of, God forbid, crisis, because of the way we would want to do emergency service connection and reunification and all of that, it's typically considered to be detrimental for kids to have a communication device because they're sending out information from wherever their little place is. It's not necessarily accurate and it doesn't, the parents really need to be in touch, listen to the superintendent message he's sending out or the police chief or fire chief or whoever it is, the mayor, whoever's getting that communication out and follow that direction. We don't want parents all showing up at the school for their child because then we aren't able to carry out the emergency procedures we need to. We do have some kids for whom the anxiety level, that there's a, you know, a question back and forth about, does having the phone help them feel oriented just because they have that connection with a parent or relative and something's going on at home, et cetera? And there are certain situations in which we might, okay, bring your phone to your counselor. If at any time during the day to call or talk to or communicate with, you go to the counselor and you're able to do that as opposed to having it with you on your person where you're looking at it, trying to check it, run to the bathroom every five minutes. So it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a complicated conversation.
Well, it's a, it's a district-wide conversation. We just have to, the elementary school principals who said the exact same thing. So it's a, it's a district-wide conversation that I think we all have to be on the same page about.
Sure.
And in my work around technology, doing therapy with parents, it's like it's gonna get harder before it gets better.
Yep.
That's just how it is. Like, we just have to be okay with the fact that kids are gonna hate it, parents might hate it. But our job is to educate kids.
Right.
And those are distracting. And it's making it almost impossible.
Yeah, and that the kids don't agree that they're distracted. So that's, the first hurdle is gonna be the dialogue with the kids to say, you know, try and help them understand the impact of having a phone. I know that when my daughter was in college and going out to dinner with friends, et cetera, they used to have this deal where you had to put your phone in the middle of the table and whoever touched their phone first had to pay for everybody. That was a really good incentive, so we need to come up with some things like that for our kids. I don't know what we're making a paper, but, but, you know, but seriously to, you know, get them.
Like if they give up their phone, there's an incentive, right?
Yeah, they truly don't agree. And they believe they're necessary, they believe they need them for safety. And it's, it's just, they're just used to having them. It's not, their campaign's called We Want To Eat, where, you know, people are trying to get families not to give the phone to a kid until they get to eighth grade. It's too late, you know, at this, this day and age, they've had that phone for forever. Either just using a parent's phone or having their own phone, so.
Thanks, we could talk about this first.
Yeah.
Let's talk about learning, I know it's related.
Yes.
I, I just have one quick question, especially on the higher levels. When it comes to computers, how are students in the classroom, are they using laptops in classrooms? And that, essentially like, I can text them, I can check. I mean, there are limitations on, on the laptops that they're using, right?
Yeah, I don't know, at the high school, we, our kids don't have access to chat. So the district has it shut down, is that the same?
That's true. That's the difference between bring your own device policy, bring your own laptop.
Oh, that's true.
And we're doing, in Pro Books, it makes for control about, if they can view and, and, and like their chat and messages with them.
Other questions?
So what we're hoping you're seeing that both from O'Malley and also from GHS is not a lot of new, or things you've seen before. And then, and always account of that, that, you know, so the bunch of priorities conversation, first this conversation, priorities in conversation are presented, I should say, being January, and now there's real threats. Doesn't change every six months, in fact, it only changed every, every couple of years, that sort of thing. So, and then also connections between, as you asked about, did you have great questions, connections across the grade levels as well, so.
When you're looking, you know, or I kept in mind the fact that you said this is year three. And there's been almost three years of pandemic, so it must feel like year one, like over and over again. In a lot of ways, a little bit. So I guess I'm curious, when you look at the different goals, is there any that feel particularly hard to sort of manage?
So far, the hardest one to manage is for the administrators to get into classrooms regularly, near that feedback. So that, that is the one that, you know, we keep on there and we have to have a plan for it, we have to do that well. Because without doing that, we're not gonna be able to help people. I don't love the word accountability around that, it's really about providing the support of the follow-up. We do a professional development, something that's critical. And if we're not able to go in and say, hey, you've done a great job with that, or, you know, or give some more specific feedback to how it's implemented and how kids are being impacted by the changes we're making, then you can't go that next step further. And that's where you don't get the sustainability, so.
And what are the barriers or what have barriers been?
It's been, it's the conduct and time.
And COVID.
And staffing, sorry?
And COVID.
And COVID, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a huge difference in the level of frequency of behavior since COVID.
It's one thing we're, it's one thing we're doing, which you don't know, because we haven't given you an update on S R funding. Is just a couple of weeks ago, as we were, you know, continued to sort of adjust that. Is, they mentioned this briefly, one of our, this is a fraternity for, for a while. So we were able to, then was able to identify, ran by Brian Desa to come into a place, you know, on a major basis. With S R funding, we kept him on for the rest of this year, to end the school year. And then just recently made the decision to have him on for another year, S R funding. And that, you know, just helps on many levels. You know, you've got one as a person per grade at this point, for next year. It allows some of the things that we talked about, that we're able to focus on. It just provides a level of support that, you know, O'Malley staff, students really need, you know, on variety of levels because our system plays, plays, their roles are broad. So that's gonna be a really, Brian's done a very good job, he's a very positive, forward, positive, very positive person of energy. I think, you know, really great middle school energy, connecting with, with students. And also has been very supportive of staff too, so that's, I think, very significant. I know it's very significant to have him continue on.
Two more questions. How many teachers write O'Malley and how many of your staff can evaluate?
We have sixty, sixty-four teachers. Teachers, counselors, et cetera, that are in the evaluation unit. And right now, with Brian, we have five.
Five evaluating, so that's it, okay.
We will, yeah, we just, Brian did not evaluate this year because he was tougher, so.
But you'd be able to next year?
Right, so before this year, you had three.
Yeah, yeah, before this year, we had three.
So it was four, five.
And my final question is, so this, this is great, but I'd like to see a mid-year follow-up as opposed to getting an end-of-year report, how did that go? Because in my, so I'm just wondering if you can put this on the calendar, like after the new year.
I think that's gonna be important because it, we, this is an opportunity that, believe me, I, I, this is an unusual opportunity, I, I so appreciate that support on it. And it, it will give us the opportunity to really focus on the community, the positive community building impact that is essential to helping with the conduct. We don't, we don't make turnarounds in, in conduct by just doing punitive or even just trying to restore to practice in a reaction. We do it by being proactive. So having them aligned on which grade level really brings that focus into where to be a community. And then the flip side of that is, is giving that really specific feedback. So, you know, we have to have, we, we need to show that it didn't make any difference even though we did it all or it made a huge difference, which is what I'm banking on by mid-year.
And then also, on June 22nd, we need to work back.
The eighth.
Turned eighth, sorry, so it was our next meeting to give the, they gave a media report on student learning and they're gonna, which was the first time O'Malley had that in, I don't know. And then next meeting, they'll be the end of the year, followed by the end of the year, which will be the first time ever that will happen, so. So yes.
So, so tell me, I'm long, so I heard from some parents who are academic excellence, right? It's great. And one question they had, because it's part of the new process, they were told that they were needing to run that. Period times are run from forty-five minutes, from an hour and a half to forty-five minutes.
We're not sure yet. So that, that is, the goal is to create a schedule where teachers will teach five forty-five minute blocks instead of four sixty-minute blocks. But it's not, I'm still working out the details, we have, I think, to all of you, the, the staff, that we can add to do that. I still admit a couple of crossroads with, even with that staffing, can I make it work? Obviously, if I can't make that schedule shift, we're not gonna bring on that extra staff. But that is potentially, yeah.
So, I don't.
You heard from an hour to forty-five minutes, not an hour and a half.
Okay, right, so that must be the truth.
Well, the academic classes would go from sixty to forty, to forty-five. The specialist classes would go from eighty to forty-five.
I think it was a specialist class, I was hearing about.
And.
The other piece on that, though, is, I mean, you know, there are all these trade-offs, really, is that they would have fewer students, because you you should explain this perhaps, because.
That time, either the class sizes will be smaller, that's the objective, smaller class sizes and the opportunity for. For example, when specialist teachers and or E L personnel to meet with content area teachers. Um, yes, there are some subject areas for whom it will be a challenge to from eighty to forty-five. Um, most other districts have forty-five and there are many successes with that, so it's a part of its chain. There are also some of the specialist subjects plus a lot of our special ed area personnel that are dining for a smaller block. Short block that maybe means too long for academic support, for example. So, you know, there, as Lynn mentioned, trade-offs, um, I've known the schedule in the world that made everybody happy. So that's.
I think it was the, I think it was the specialist maker's blocks, is what I was told. That was the.
The investigative science or, or, yeah.
So to follow on that, I know that you've been passionate and I think. Knowing the schedule at O'Malley, feedback I've heard from different parents and having my son be there. What resources do you need to make the schedule shift? Because we need to, we need to make sure it's one of those things that make everything work. Um, so if you find it a scheduling thing, that you need more resources, consider another teacher, for another specialist or whatever to make it work. Um, I just think at this point, we really need to to go forward with that strategy that we believe will be, have that, and everything else.
You've you've been extraordinarily supportive. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and I know we're going through.
I should, but don't have an answer to that tonight.
Yeah, no, I know, but we're going through the budget process now, but, um. We have the mayor on the committee, so maybe there's, you know, if there's a need, we certainly want it, or how we could accommodate.
It's it's, it comes down to the math of, can, do I have enough bodies to put in each block so that kids have something meaningful to do? I, in especially here with our kids' performance level, I don't have the luxury of, you know, setting up studies where somebody can supervise. So then there's a place where a group of kids to go. Our kids need to be engaged in learning every minute that they're there. So that's where I'm at with moving, what what can fit together and what.
Um, so my opening comment also is, um, these priorities, do you communicate out, will you communicate out to families about?
Yes.
Yes, I just, so that they kind of all have this, not necessarily shift, but kind of, uh. So what we say is, and what, you know, what work is going on and all that, so.
Yes, I think, I mean, one of the benefits of having the three focus areas and also going to the articulated instructional focus. Is that's easy to communicate, easier to communicate, you know, here's who we are, here's what we're about, here's what we're working on, here's what's important.
And then as you're getting to repetition, it's very important. Everything, every way we can, every opportunity we can, you know, to repeat those focus areas, repeat those priorities. People coming in for parent conference, people coming in for, you know, not an excellent, you know, excellence, people coming in for, you know. So just make it clear, easy to communicate, and then repeat it again. To take on, take on, take on those.
So we have a motion to accept the. So move. Any questions? Reach out, let her know. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Virgo?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairperson Plancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And.
Yes.
Frank Mark. All right, next up, we have Principal Cook.
Presentation, we we were late in finalizing it. Mr. Cook may have gotten, give me the actual school group plan.
Um, I have the the report for this evening, so usually I've done this in like June or August, so. Um, this is a little early and and I thought it would be important for us to not delay Lynn being able to present, but because of some feedback from our I L T. Some of the complexity of departments and things we have at high school, um, getting feedback from the I L, our instructional leadership team and the, um. The site-based council, we're still integrating.
So what we'd like to do is is give you essentially a summary of the plan, a summary of it, like the presentation. And then, as James finalized it, and James and I communicated, uh, after the fact on scheduling this, is that. And he's asked in the future, because of the way the high school operates, as he's done in the past. Um, this is what I should request, that he gives the plan due later in the, in the, towards the end of the year. That's on me, not knowing that, not like thinking that through properly, so. But we'd like to give you the presentation tonight, okay?
It's essentially the same, I mean, it's, it's everything, it's just the end.
Yeah, the plan, the written plan will get later and they can vote on it then.
Okay.
That's all, yeah. Yeah, yeah, not not that, but this way, this will be a presentation, then you'll see an old written plan, and that way, you can vote on.
So you mean the end of this school year, not the next, I think, the end of this school year, like this way?
End of this school, right. I mean, put it very clearly, from now on, I'll ask the high school principal, James Cook, to have the, his school group plan presented at, after the, at the last meeting in school. Okay, which what he's done in the past, and this year, I I did not schedule properly. So that's on me.
But it's important that we do it tonight, is what I, you know, when I noticed this and so, because I think you'll see the complementary elements. And this, it is in 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 the the plan that you approved last year is in this form, same same form you're going to see tonight.
Put your phone. This year.
No, same. No, I I was, yeah, I was so conscientious about this idea of keeping a focus and taking the next steps of the focus, uh, even the design of the plan. So, um, as, uh, Lynn had explained, some of the, um, in integration of of different elements that goes into creating a school improvement plan. When there's a sustainable improvement plan required, um, I just, this is, this slide is just to remind folks that, um. This plan integrates not only the expectation of a school improvement plan with the expectation of a sustainable improvement plan. But also the school growth plan required by N E A S, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Um, and we had a successful accreditation visit earlier this fall. I can't believe it's the same year. Somehow that seems some other time period, but it's just October this year. Yeah.
That was this year.
That was this year.
That was this year.
Incredible.
Yeah.
That's incredible.
I know. Exactly. So this plan is is, it takes the next steps with the, um, that integrated plan that I presented to you last year around that little, around this time. Um, so the Unified School Improvement Plan is two priority areas. So like Lynn talking about three areas, we have two, two areas. First area is that is really the, um, instructional focus, and you heard Lynn talk about that as well. So at Cluster High School, the the instructional focus that we have is brain-based culturally responsive instruction. To break it down to what that looks like in the classroom, every day, you know, with a lesson, um, a teacher ignites the learning. They then chunk the learning into, um, digestible pieces, no more than twelve to fifteen minutes. Things we know about the brain and what the brain can take in. The third phase, you're processing that, you're actively processing it, what what's called chewing on it, right? You've got to make it your own, can't just listen to the presentation, you've got to do something with it. And then the end of the class has the sort of, the the recap, the review of that. So ignite, chunk, to review is the is the instructional model. Um, and as Lynn has presented, the why of that is so students can do meaningful analysis, evaluation, creation, right? Their their instruction moves them to be able to analyze, to evaluate what they're looking at, to make something, to create with it. And to do that, they then can achieve our vision of the graduate. Vision of the graduate is, you know, again, we've made that digestible. Students have foundational, um, knowledge and they have communication, collaboration and problem-solving skills to be productive citizens. That's what we want in our kids. So by using this culturally responsive model, we're, we get kids to higher-order thinking and we get them to be able to communicate, collaborate and problem-solve to be citizens with us in the world. That's our first goal. Second goal is to increase social emotional learning. High schools overall are late to this idea that, um, uh, we need to engage in both explicit and implicit social emotional instructions. So students are getting better at self-awareness, self-management, uh, decision-making, relationship skills and social awareness. Those are the five, uh, castle, uh, social emotional learning areas. And we're not just teaching our content, right? To put another term frame, not just teaching math, but students are getting better at self-management, they're getting better at making good decisions. They're getting better at relationships and being aware of themselves socially, like even while they're learning math or science or down in our shops throughout the school. The reason for that, like what we get out of social emotional learning then is getting student wellness, better student attendance. Uh, better transition from the middle school to the high school and a more equitable and inclusive school climate and culture. Those are the, those are the pieces. So you'll see that what used to be lots of disparate things comes together, um, under the umbrella of social emotional learning. And I think it's really important that Lynn talked about practicing, not just the, um, you know, the administrators we focus on. These plans sometimes, but they also need to be worded in ways that people can remember. And we say social emotional learning an awful lot, right? We say that phrase, but what we mean by that is the self-awareness, the self-management, decision-making. Right, relationship building and, uh, social awareness. And that's what we mean when we say social emotional learning, that they're getting better in each of those areas. So that's what we're communicating with our, with this plan. So then breaking that down, as you know, you heard from Lynn's plan as well, as Lynn from O'Malley breaks this down. We will continue the implementation of the P D, our P L C work, peer evaluator, uh, peer feedback and evaluator feedback. And I will agree right now, before anybody asks a question, I'll agree with Lynn that the most difficult thing to do over the COVID years has been to get into classrooms. The last two months have been awesome. I've been in more classrooms over the last two, uh, months than, you know, just able to do and managing the different adjustments and crises and so on. Add to, it's been so good being in classrooms and working with teachers, giving feedback, talking with them about their lessons, focusing on something that they can't see on their own. But having another pair of eyes in the room allows them to work on some particular, uh, aspect of their practice and make it, uh, and grow in that area. And that's what I'm looking forward to next year. I'm already looking forward to next year to to extend this, uh, part of it. So we're moving here. So last year where I talked about, you know, designing or, um, the planning and that sort of thing. This year you'll see, I've tried to underline those verbs, we're applying the awareness and knowledge of brain-based and cultural, um, to relationships and lessons, right? We're, we're now applying, um, that next year, and folks are getting feedback on that, they're working with their peers on that. Because we know we've done the P D, the concepts are largely in place, but we've got to refine it, we've got to figure out what it looks in different lessons at different parts of the year. Um, actually working on fostering the relationships that create learning partnerships and fully implementing that ignite, chunk, to review lesson model that I talked about a couple of minutes ago. And again, getting feedback from peers, getting feedback from evaluators, honing things with peers in the P L C work. Uh, and then going deeper in particular areas. So for example, when you're igniting learning, what does that look like in a science classroom? Right, does that look like in an English classroom? We have these concepts, now we have this common instructional, uh, model, but there are differences in different disciplines. And that's kind of the nature of the specialization of the high school, and we need to get, we we need to become great in each of those areas. So, uh, the next, um, slide, um, where this is about the higher-order thinking part of it. So using that instructional model, moving towards higher-order thinking in all our classes. One of the things we noticed when we did our review as part of the Sustainable Improvement Plan, I guess, four years ago. Is there's strong evidence of higher-order thinking in our more advanced classes and in our upper-level classes. And we needed to do a better job of that with our freshmen and our sophomores. And and so, um, they're able to create, you know, evaluate, create, apply their learning. So what that means is more strengthened performance assessments. So it's good to, the test will about, and the quiz will evaluate their foundational knowledge. But then the performance assessment is what can they do with that knowledge? How can they apply it to some problem solver? Just right in our vision of the graduate. Um, so we're going to strengthen our performance assessment, strengthen the daily lessons that lead students to the performance assessments. Um, and then strengthen the access and support that helps students with, um, different learning challenges. Access the daily lessons and do well on the performance assessment. So we have these things in place, and now we're looking to strengthen, strengthen these areas.
I mean, what a performance assessment is.
So a performance assessment might be, you know, so I was in the auto shop the other day and 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 Mr. Machel had the students, um. Given them some instruction on, um, how to take apart this engine and and the process. And then kind of gave the challenge to the kids after doing the instruction of, okay, now they're gonna do it, they're gonna perform.
Right.
And then I'm going to assess how well you do that, which was not just the knowledge, um, that the students needed to do that effectively. And put things in places where they could be used again, right? They were going to take them apart, but can you put it back together? It has to be done in a, kind of, in a way, but they also had to collaborate with each other to do it. So it was that, the workplace knowledge that is also being evaluated.
So in that situation, I love that you look at me and think vocational, so that's awesome for projects, right? But English class.
Sure, yeah, English.
Like, how do you do the, and I'm curious to see how this plays out.
Yeah, no, it's great. So if I'm teaching rhetoric and argument, right, so I'm teaching, um, students, uh. Yeah, how to make an argument effectively, uh, there there might be a a real-world problem, a social justice issue, a real-world problem. That the students are then going to apply, learning about paint those logos and eat those, and not just know those definitions.
Oh, they do.
And that's part of it. Um, not just be able to analyze or break down Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech and show the components of it, but then do one themselves. And deliver that speech to their peers, in which they show that they're using the strategies they've learned by analyzing a great speech and by learning the elements of rhetoric. And now they're actually going to deliver that speech to their peers. So that's one of our ninth grade, that's one of the things we have across the ninth grade.
So it's not necessarily like the written test, and I'm trying to avoid a lot of testing, right?
Right. That's right.
So that's why I'm asking.
That's right.
Performance is part of the class, part of the engagement and the commodity of the classroom.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
And then then there's also, then even going next, is 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 there a public component of that? So do you want to think of the classroom, which is very powerful, right? But then, you know, like, for example, building sheds is actually a very public thing, because other folks outside of you are using it. Or in this case, giving speech to, you know, a a, um, an audience outside of school, and we have lots of this, right? So, but we go on and on about it.
Sure, yeah, there are lots of biotech things we did recently in our our ninth-grade biology classes, is another applied example of a performance assessment. So, yeah, we're really excited about, you know, obviously, uh, uh, excited about this, because kids get excited about them in a different way.
I just hear that word assessment, I'm like, please tell me you got another test. I know the testing we do is good, but let's not add, let's get more.
That's right, yeah, sure thing. Um, okay, so on the next slide, um, we we take a look at the vision of the graduate more closely. So, uh, this is really, um, about the support, this slide has to do with the support that students get, like how. In order to do some of the, you know, performance assessments, um, we've added tier-two interventions with, uh, skills and practice classes. You know, uh, that where students can work on underlying English skills they might need, underlying math skills they may need. Or some of the, um, organizational and social emotional skills they may need to be effective, uh, across the curriculum. We're adding, uh, for our English learner students, we're adding support classes for our beginners. Um, and that, that mentioned how these things dovetail with the budget ask, so by adding another ESL teacher at the high school, we're going to be able to, um, offer these support classes again.
I guess a good question. Are you trying to find somebody that will go through that?
Yes, yes, it's actually part of the, uh, it's 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 part of the posting.
Great.
That we're seeking, uh, Spanish and or Portuguese speakers. Um, and we're also adding, uh, North Shore Community College Early College Course, uh, that will be, it's gonna be asynchronous. Where students are, one afternoon, their instructor from North Shore Community College comes to, um, Cluster High School. And then the asynchronous part, um, students have a block during the school day where they can work on, with support on the asynchronous part of the course. The other exciting part of that, it's really targeted at students who may need some help bridging from high school to college. And it's been, uh, first semester of the course is about the college experience, right? It teaches kids about that, how to be successful. And it teaches kids about that, how to be successful in college. And they get college credit for that.
Is that a dual enrollment?
It is, yeah. They're getting credit for last year, uh, this, because of the, the course during the day at Cluster High School and they're getting credit as well. So that's something we're adding, um, to again, support students in this uh vision of the graduate. Um, we'll be implementing uh keys to literacy practices now that across English um, uh, history and biology teachers have been trained in keys to literacy. We'll be looking to find our implementation of those strategies. These are again ways of um assess, helping us with some gaps students may have in their reading and writing skills at the high school level. And it's across the curriculum. And same with implementation of our uh dialogic classroom practices. Essentially what that is, is that that's a, a, a partnership with essential partners. Uh, John Saruth, that folks may know from our community, is, is an expert on uh classroom dialogues. And it's one of the best ways of doing the chew or active processing part of a class. And what do you, once you've learned something, being able to uh talk and enter a dialogue about the complexities of this thing that you've learned before you then go and apply it, is essentially a kind of shorthand version of what a dialogic classroom is. So that's some PD we've done and we'll be looking at implementation. So on the next slide, we're looking at uh making sure that it all up, now that we, we have a written curriculum for NEAS uh that was evaluated during the accreditation, um, in reviewing our curriculum, we're looking for, are we maximizing all the possible opportunities for students communicating, collaborating and problem solving? Are we giving them opportunities? Instead of just having a test on this material, are they also able to collaborate with peers on communicating some important aspect of that to solve a problem? All right. The, another aspect of, of the instructional practice is implementing, reflecting and revising the written curriculum. So this is the, the written documentation that again, we had to prepare as part of our accreditation. So this is ongoing work. This, this work never stops, right? Because you're always deploying a unit, you're implementing the unit and then you're working with your peers in professional learning communities on what can we do better next time? Some of the examples of ideas folks have for summer work this year. Uh, social studies, we're working on a civics curriculum. We're really excited about that for ninth, focusing on all ninth and 10th graders. I give them that civics curriculum then. I could go on and on about those details, but it's not time for it now. No, it's time for later. Uh, life science curriculum for our English learners, honing the um, the biology curriculum or like, what we call life science curriculum for the English learners. Uh, English 10 curriculum, they're really focused on um, uh, materials that are going to promote diversity and cultural responsiveness in the classroom. Um, and then our uh computer assisted design curriculum is, this, this is a great problem to have. Um, our students in those classes have been so engaged that they're moving through the curriculum at a rate, faster rate than we thought they would as we redesigned our CAD program. So they'll be redesigning the second and third year of CAD to make it more challenging for students. So there's more there for them and that's really exciting. So that's just a sample. There's a lot of other work happening this summer, but that's a kind of a few examples of this goal and how we'll be doing it this summer. All right, now we're ready to move on to the, the social emotional learning goal. So um, uh, to guide this work, we have uh several teams working on things. We have the social emotional learning, school growth team, with our, our mental health ambassador students. Might remember that presentation from uh earlier this year. Our mental health and social emotional learning steering committee will be helping to guide this work. So uh we'll be piloting social emotional learning activities during our homeroom time. Smack up, okay. But I didn't touch anything. Um, implementing wellness strategies from this year's PD. So implement again, learning uh trauma-informed practices, for example, during professional development this year. Implementing strategies next year, um, and planning and delivering more advanced professional development. For our teachers and staff related to social emotional learning and mental health awareness. So what, what the reason I, I underline the word advanced, because a lot of the general concepts are in place around relationship building, that's part of cultural responsive teaching or trauma-informed practices. And the next step is highlighting by reflecting on um that student survey data, teachers' experience, designing PD uh that helps people focus in and hone in on the areas of greatest need moving forward with this initiative. So the next slide gets at the, the part about student attendance. The summer will be working on operational, operationalizing the new uh attendance policy. Um, and that'll be guided by an attendance operational policy work group that we're putting together right now. Developing and implementing protocols for communication with families about absences and underlying reasons for absences and how absences affect progress and growth. Developing and implementing interventions for the chronically absent students. And then uh implementing the attendance team design that was influenced by uh the feedback we got from attendance works. Improve the transition into the high school. We're looking at um ninth grade specific home room activities. Um, and then uh continuing uh the improvements in our tier-one support for students with our district curriculum accommodation plan, universal design for learning, that you heard Lynn talk about earlier. Uh, and um, we're adding, we're able to add some academic skills and practice classes, math skills and practice and English skills and practice. We've noticed that these courses that with the support committee, we've been able to add over the last couple of years make a big difference in students passing classes. Kind of comparing students who came in uh with certain grades and if they had the skills and practice class are more successful than similar students who didn't have the skills and practice class. So we're, that's good data for us, that's really good news. And so we're adding some sections and prioritizing adding some of those sections. Where am I here? All right. We'll continue to, so the, the third part of the social emotional learning goal is an inclusive equitable school climate and culture. So we'll be continuing the use of cultural responsive teaching as our guiding framework for all of our school. In the fall, we'll be launching an anti-defamation league, World of Diff, World of Difference Anti-Bias Bullying Prevention and Diversity Program, um, which entails um training uh student leaders to be able to facilitate discussions on anti-bias, bullying prevention and diversity, um, and training staff on supporting this work as well. Um, so that's with the help of Amy Cam. We've been, been working on that part. Um, we'll be im- in implementing professional development, policy advocacy, student event and activity planning and awareness. And awareness work that comes out of some of the groups we've added or strengthened. So for example, uh, these are, this is PD um advocacy, uh, event planning that's come out of our racial equity inclusion team, that it has both students and staff. Our gender equity group, which is new this year, um, also students and staff um, and our Saga Gender, uh, Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Group. We have uh staff, school growth teams dedicated to these issues as well, racial equity inclusion team, a culture responsive teaching team, um, and our Equity Access Inclusion Team as well as a positive school culture team, all of whom have events planned. Too much to get into all the details right now, but um that will help us with uh creating an inclusive, equitable school climate and culture. Oh, great. And then some, uh, there's more, I didn't put on one slide. So um, really focused on our English learners. We're adding a, a program leader for our, to help with English learner education. So that's to support our ESL teachers, to support our sheltered English conversion classes. It's going to be, it's, it's, it really prioritizes uh English learner education by having a leadership position uh as part of our instructional leadership team. We're adding an um, an additional budget, adding an additional ESL teacher and uh ESL support position. And because of that, as I mentioned earlier, we're able to add that beginner English learner support class. And I couldn't, uh, I, it's been so great having the English learner liaison in the school this year. I can't imagine this year without that position. So I put it in the slides to, you know, thank the uh committee for public support that last year. Um, and all of these things complement um the addition last year of the EL liaison. And then there's the, you know, to loop back to the curriculum slide, because all this is intertwined. I just wanted to mention that some of that curriculum work, we're engaged in includes updates to include more diverse representation of the text and topics in our classes. So as we review curriculum, um, this goal is also always in mind. And that you notice along the way that there's some uh summer work that's already going into that. And then one more section.
That's the last slide I have on.
So I did, so it's the eighth and ninth grade transition, right? It's a good thing I, we had the, um, we, oh, you're right. I, um, no, that is everything. I changed the order, so you're good then. Thank you.
Can you start sharing this presentation?
Yeah, and I apologize again, I was working on it with consolidating the um, uh, some of the feedback that I've gotten to make things ready for tonight, to get it in the most update-to-date most up-to-date form to share with everybody.
Just a quick question I'm going to ask what I asked Lynn earlier. How many teachers at Worcester High and how many evaluators?
I figured you were going to ask that, so I did the math while you were, uh, while Lynn was talking. So we have um eighty-four and, and, and that includes the school counselors and then there's six folks uh who do evaluation. It's a little tricky because if, if you're talking just about teaching staff, now we're, we're in the seventies and there are five people who are doing, who do that. Including, um, including the assistant superintendent, uh, helps with one, one group of people. So it's quite a lot, quite a lot of um, of observation and uh but the other uh change in the budget to the um coordinator of co, of school counseling and operations position is going to help with that.
Will that be evaluated position?
Uh, yes, currently does, but will also by not having the counseling load.
Yeah.
Right, will help, help with that. Uh, the other thing that helped tremendously this year was moving the um, creating the coordinator of um special education positions. So then the person in the position, Lisa Williams, can uh evaluate special educators. There's a huge lift. And also through the grant funding, we'll have the uh CBTE directors who will be able to, I mean, I'll miss, I'll, I'll observe anyway. But I'll miss observing those classes. But it'll be nice to have that support for the five teachers in our CBTE program.
So you said you have six, but we'll potentially have more.
That's right, yes, that, the addition, the one more, the CBTE. Yep, that's cool. Yep, and then things start to look manageable, yeah, yeah, which is exciting.
Thank you. Thank you, James, Lynn and Laura. Uh, just to wrap up by saying this, is that uh what you're hearing and seeing, just like with the other schools, is, is great work for us to do, okay? It's focused on engaging students, connecting with students, making sure students want to go to school and also really focus on the quality of critical instruction. And we do so much in our schools. I mean, there, as folks know, I, I hope, I hope the public understands, like, our schools provide a lot of services. In addition, it's just like teaching academics, okay? That, that's the way schools stay, that's the role of it, okay? And, uh, but it also means that we can get, um, we can lose focus and do many, many things. But if you really want to make a difference in lives or kids, you make sure they want to be at school, that they, they know they're cared about and they're known. And you work really hard to engage in new relationships and not doing them to them, but having them do those interesting things. And I really believe that our elementary, preschool really, but also elementary, middle and high school are, are really on the path. It's very exciting. And then, kind of a quick update on what we know about this uh, next steps for our class in 2022.
So I'm up again.
You're up again.
All right, good, Mr. Cook. I'm so excited about that, I love doing this, um.
So we also have the second reading of the CBTE admissions policy.
I'd stay around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that on here too.
Cook Show. Am I showing anything?
No, no, this is all, this is my enthusiasm and lots of colleges I'll be talking about and some other uh trainings and so on. So, um, again, for a couple of people in this room, this has been very real for some of us who are dealing with this, uh, with our, you know, our families as well as with, with students in, in our district. And it's, it's been a, been quite um an interesting year uh across the country for um, for college admissions and for your post-secondary outcomes. A lot of the shifts that have happened because of COVID have had great effects on where students are headed post-secondary. So I just wanted to start with, um, I'll try to group things into, you know, uh, meaningful cut categories for people. And I want to start by talking about, we have, we have two students, um, you know, who will be attending um very highly competitive schools. And to give you a sense of that, you know, we have a student who will be attending Harvard in the fall. Their acceptance rate was about three percent. Um, we, which is amazing, right? I was like, but who applies? And then all of that, only three percent. I mean, um, we have a student who will be uh attending Tusk University. Their acceptance rate was nine percent, about half of what it usually is. So, you know, it just gives you a sense of what's, what's happening, you know, out there.
And, and I don't think somebody's been accepted at Tucks for a long time from here.
Okay.
Even though, um, you know, there are people, you know, that went to Tucks and tried to get, you know, be supportive of those kids that they felt that they, that kids should have been accepted. So it screams.
Yeah, yeah, so it's good, yeah, I think this is good news. And it's just a tip, I just wanted to give two examples of that kind of thing about the acceptance rates that are extraordinarily low this year. But I also wanted to, you know, create some other groups. So we have students who are going into um schools. Uh, for example, so many students are going into schools focused on science and technology. So uh, you know, great schools like uh Worcester Polytechnic Institute, Wentworth Institute of Technology and Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. So a lot of our students are, are heading in, in, in those schools that are focused on science and technology. Um, we have students going into other focused areas like Berkeley College of Music, Savannah College of Art and Design, Mass College of Pharmacy and Health Science, uh, Maine Maritime Academy and Embry-Riddle Aeronautic School of University. So, um, so these are some of the, you know, most prestigious schools in these very kind of focused areas. Another way to think about where students are headed is to think about um how far and how close they're going, right? So we have students leaving the region and they're going to places like the College of Charleston and Furman University in South Carolina. They're going to Savannah College of Art and Design in Georgia, uh, Florida Atlantic University, Lynn University and University of South Florida in Florida. Heading all the way out to California at Santa Clara University, San Francisco University and San Diego State. And we have um a student going to Loyola University of Louisiana. Students who are going not quite as far, we have called students going to Penn State. We have students heading to New York at Hofstra, Syracuse, Sierra and Merrimount, Manhattan. Students going to Sacred Heart and University of Hartford in Connecticut. Champlain and University of Vermont in Burlington, Vermont. Quite a few students going to UPM. Heading down to Rhode Island, going to URI and Bryant in Rhode Island and then UNH and Clement State in Hampshire. There are the many folks who are staying a bit closer. So going to places like Suffolk and Emmanuel, um, out to Hampshire College, UMass Dartmouth, UMass Amherst, UMass Lowell, Salem State, South Shore Community College, Gordon, Bentley, Merrimack, Endicott, Western New England University, Curry, and then some of the other schools I mentioned earlier, like WPI and Wentworth. And I save for this part, two of my alma maters, Emerson College and Tusk University, we have students going to. So I'm very happy about that, to be in Emerson and Tuss. So those are. So those are, you know, some of the the kind of ways of thinking about it with specialized areas. Some of the very competitive schools our students have gotten into and then, you know, who's staying close and who's moving away. Altogether, so far, we, students are still because of wait lists and students moving, you know, putting the class at one place, getting off a wait list to another, there's still some shifting happening. But this year, forty-four percent of our students so far are heading to four-year colleges, which is a bit higher than usual, which is really, yeah, it's really great to see. In addition to college, we have other folks who are heading to fifth year, right, a bridge year, students who are all sorts of very interesting plans of taking a gap year in different parts of the world, whether they have an internship waiting for them, heading to family in Europe. And I know there was one here.
You mentioned a student that's going to school in Germany for.
That's right, yes, which that student didn't put into this cohort, but we will make sure, I noticed that earlier today too. There are some students who haven't yet filled out the information. We'll grab them before they leave this week, but yes, there's a student attending university in Germany as well.
So you have every student fill that out?
We do, yes, individually, yeah, through our Navian system, they fill it out and you can see who hasn't and make sure we get that before they leave. Yeah, it's sort of the, it's actually the last time we do that. If they haven't done it by the time they get their cap and gown, they have to do it then.
Yeah.
When they get there, you know, instead, take a little longer to get the cap and gown, but they have to finish the senior exit survey, which is what this is called.
What year were you staying in Germany?
Yes, I wish I had it.
Yeah, for engineering, software engineering and family there, so.
That's right, yeah.
Any military?
Yes, there are also students who are heading directly into the military who already have their dates of starting. I was just talking to a student who's entering the Marines. No one who's attended, yeah, attended one of those schools, but students who are going into the military. Yes, I talked to a student entering Marines earlier today. How excited he is about.
Now, when you do those sort of exit interviews, the percentage of kids that say don't have a plan?
Yeah.
Do you do anything in particular for them with them, support them, do you track with them?
Yeah, so often we're connecting, we're seeking to so right now we we have a higher percentage that we will end up with, so we, there there are thirty percent about of students who haven't submitted yet. So the counselors do seek to connect them. One of the things we've been successful with is working with Wellspring on continuing that follow-up and getting the students connected. Wellspring also worked in some of our English classes, our reading and writing beyond high school class in particular, where they've already built a relationship and many of those students are undecided at this point. And then our other relationship is through Wellspring with North Shore Community College for that kind of, it's really helpful with students. We know that if students can get twelve credits, if you can get twelve credits, you're likely to finish your associate's degree. Right? And then if you can't get you to twelve credits, and that's something where Wellspring is really helpful in helping us with the follow-up. And that's something we're looking to improve with the it's probably been a couple of years since I talked to you all about the mentoring program that we've started and partnered, funded with help from the GEA in partnership with Wellspring. That initiative is off the ground this year, it's happening and that's incredibly helpful, that part of the partnership. Yeah, and it's also something that with the position change that we talked about earlier, the school counseling position, we're looking to begin with more of that kind of tracking and work with the data when the coordinator of school counseling no longer has a caseload. I've got a lot that I didn't mention here too, so I can answer a lot of questions.
So I'm just wondering, this may be a little bit more post-graduation, but anybody going to Gloucester Biotech that's got into that account?
We we don't have anybody listed here, but we at lunch today had them in. So we had another event at lunch, at lunch today, it was on my calendar. I didn't get to go down and see, I think John Doyle was here. But we know, we, and that's one of the things that we we offer and recruit all the way out till they begin their next session, yeah.
Somewhere, because I think that promoting and letting people know sort of all the amazing things that students do for, you know, this year, the class of twenty twenty-two is a really significant way to sort of let people know all the good things happening in our schools, where kids go. So I've jotted things down, but is there anywhere to get like a list or?
Oh, yeah, so, so, yes, Anne. I happen to know Ethan Forman from the Gloucester Times is listening tonight, and I spoke recently. He'd like to do an article on our graduate's plans and and I asked him to, as he often does, tune in tonight to hear the quick update, but we'll follow up and work with him, so he has, you know, just good information. And perhaps also he expressed interest in speaking with you students that are, you know, that are have a variety of plans. And so we'll hope to get that in the paper, but then also we can put together something to focus as well.
Right, something for our website.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. No, I think it's, I mean, as you're hearing, incredible range
Right.
of pathways for our students and just, you know, all really, you know, beating them to great things. And so really want to make sure that we not only, you know, recognize them, but also make sure the community knows just how great they're doing.
Right, and the diversity of experience is really quite something.
Yeah, it's really, it's marvelous here.
Thank you, thank you for giving the opportunity to share that, exciting news.
Okay, do you want to do CBT policy?
Yes, we can. Without a general, the second reading, so under action, we have the second reading of the Career Vocational Technical Education Admissions Policy File JFA. And last meeting, we approved the first reading.
So, sorry. Yeah, just just the minor change that the community identified during the first reading was through a copy and paste error. It said in a few places, resident of Gloucester home schools, which why our students are in the schools a lot, they are not residents. So we just had to change that to residents of Gloucester, because there is a difference between the admissions policy for residents, students who are residents of Gloucester, those students who are come to our school but are not residents of Gloucester. So that was cleared up, but that was the only change. Policy, if you have a question on the policy, James can answer them and I can help too if possible.
I have a quick question, only because I wasn't here at the last meeting when this was presented. I've worked on admission policies at other schools, so why this language looks very familiar, but where did this come from? Did you find best practices? Was there a draft from the Board of Education, combination?
Yes, so, yeah, it's based heavily.
It's proper and and it's and it's very similar to others I've seen, so I was just.
I think we all use the the Desis, and then what I did is I went and looked at schools who are more similar to ours. Because there's some language from DESI that really applied to the regional vocational schools, right, and not so much, so I wanted to.
Like TV in Salem or something?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I went, Mark Stubble was helpful, like I looked at the paper, of other other schools that seemed more similar to ours and I took a few things consulting with our CBT teachers and with our coordinator of school counseling to make something that we thought would work best for us.
And that's where you got the lottery language?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So I don't think I noticed this last time, but we have had, here we have specific email addresses for personnel in our policy, which seems like we wouldn't necessarily want to have, it's one thing to have the main number, the guidance department office, the whatever, but you don't want, we don't want to have to adjust the policy and personnel.
And I think that came, just so, I, that makes a lot of sense to me. I know that the policy then needs to be posted on our website, which we would want people to know.
Right.
So we think we can marry the two where in the policy that goes in the file, it has the role, not the
Yeah, yeah.
address, but then when we post it, which is a huge part of this, that the state requires that we would put those back in. So a person looking at it
Can act.
could could act, not at, not on the the commit policy document website, right, but in what we post, yeah.
Isn't this a policy we're supposed to approve every year?
That's a great question.
I think it is, and that's why when I saw the name, I was like, I don't know if I like that, but knowing that it was supposed to review it every year, I'm like, okay, we can update it as we review it every year.
I believe that is part of the new requirement, because that has to be done every year, yeah.
So we have to leave it as is, leave it as is and update it accordingly when we review it.
And, okay. Listen, that makes a lot of sense, because that's probably why the states, like why the temp.
Why you do an initiative, yeah.
Because of the new shift.
But I think it gives good information for summer planning.
Right.
So we have a motion to approve the second reading of Career Vocational Technical Education Admissions Policy File JFA. Any more discussion?
Mayor Verga.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Chairperson Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minia.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes. So now this is approved. Okay. We now have an official policy. Date on the bottom of the adoption, is it the adoption date?
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
For being here.
You're having me.
Okay, so, I'll go through here, a few things. The COVID update and then also my, update on my evaluation, because it's two areas, so. Good, the COVID update to start. Gloucester's wastewater testing results, so as you may know, valve report, make sure everyone has the same information, they have a is a wastewater analysis, it's five eleven, a couple issues with supply chain, chain partners. Do expect, speaking to the Department of Health today, that the next set of wastewater results should be available this Friday. That's not rock solid, but that's anticipated, okay? As of today, there are fifty-one, fifty-one active cases in Gloucester, not in our schools, that's in Gloucester, okay? Good news in terms of our schools, as you remember, a couple of weeks ago, Mary was coming off of an uptick. The twenty was on the downside of that, just coming off the peak of that, but as you can see, things have in the last two weeks rallied tremendously. Okay, so we have a total of twenty-seven cases right now, down seventy-four weeks ago. A lot fewer staff, obviously much fewer, many fewer students, so really just doing a lot better. There is, you know, concern because of public reports and wastewater results in the globe and sort of thing. Certainly, people know people who have COVID these days. But we're not seeing that in schools, so that was good, good news. And so that's, I think, reassuring some folks that we're doing okay, as we are. We are making some changes just around, so we're still making some making tests available for a few situations. So for the seniors, making them more widely available for in the last couple of weeks of their events and are providing additional at-home tests for all the seniors who are enrolled in the at-home testing program, and then also have reminded other families, senior families of seniors to, you know, if you can enroll. Okay, so making those more available for them, in addition to our regular scheduled tests. And we've given them actually specific dates to test on, which help them in advance of events like senior picnic or prom or graduation, so. James and the nurse there, can we get on that? And then another area is there's a, you know, a retirement party hosted by the GTA every year, that's inside this year. At Coosport, and that's another place where we're providing our staff, they want them tested before that. We would want any retirement party, which is, you know, you know, a celebration of our staff to become something that didn't say that, I didn't say that. And so, I'll work on that for those levels as well. So these are just the recent tests for this, for the last couple of weeks, I mean, added to, you know, sort of really the last five weeks. You see that are pretty consistent in terms of how we test, we're providing it every week these days. Twelve positives were found this week through our pools and then two reported through the the home tests, so that's, those are included in the number that's given to the total. There is a change, which is brand new, which is why you may not have heard about it. As you remember, the updated face mask policy of February sixteenth, and part of that was, you know, we worked together to make sure that in the updated policy that we will continue to comply with any applicable federal, state or local laws and regulations, any orders or mandates from State Department of Elementary or the State Department of Health. Well, today, it was announced, effective today, okay, that maybe the state's making a, the State Department of Public Health, Executive Office of Health and Human Services and DESI announced that there's a minor, I said a minor change in their mask regulations. Or pardon, they're saying, so children, children, just children test positives, I said, I said for these five days, that's the same, another change on that. If they're asymptomatic or symptoms are resolving, they can keep their free for twenty-four hours and may return programming after day five. That hasn't changed, same thing. It used to say that they strongly, that they recommended that children mask after that, they're now saying that they must. From days six, six through ten, they must mask, okay? So that's brand new, totally as of eleven o'clock this morning. The ARCO response team, so I don't know if you have experienced with having COVID, know someone in their schools that have COVID or COVID response team, which is two people. Sounds pretty grandiose, it's two people, really one primarily, anyway. Does a fantastic job of calling the family or the staff member, telling them, checking them about their symptoms, checking how they're doing, but also then giving them a whole timeline. Then calling back at the end of the timeline and tell them they're checking again and remind them about masking and sort of thing. Because of that, we've done, we've done pretty well in terms of, quite a lot, I'd say, in terms of folks coming back from COVID wearing masks, okay? Not through and through. It will change our communication, it will change our messaging on that, that you must be required to mask and switch, okay? It's still be very, very difficult to enforce that. We will not tell staff members who has had COVID, just like we would tell them who has any other illness. That's protected information, but we will reiterate that's expected and that should. But really, I don't see a way we can do much more than that. But we will absolutely do that. So I also want to say that this is only, it's not for staff or adults, it's only for children.
Actually, it's quite the opposite.
I, I, I was in other call, I did not hear the rationale for it, I'm not aware. So, it's coming from, but.
Brad, do you think it's advantageous, I mean, this is a policy change, is it, should we put something out to the, in an email to the parents? I mean, they're getting it via the, someone on the COVID response team, whether that's.
Yeah. No, I haven't thought that yet, through yet, I do know, well, you know, nurses and our, and our CO response team will do the communication to those folks who are affected. And principal will know and sort of thing. And principal will know and sort of thing, and, um, so I don't know if we need to broad, more broaden than that, but I'm open to suggestions, again, I haven't, honestly, I haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
I've talked to, uh, Mr. Parko, and we're, we're communicating, he's also talked to nurses already, haven't even given a, a reach to principals quite yet. So, yeah.
Just, um, I understand the difficulty in forcing it, but our nurses, I mean, nurses are aware of students coming back after this five days of isolation, right? So, so they are in a, in a position to, I mean, if this is a requirement, right, because they must do so through day ten. Obviously, nurses can't be walking through the building, but if nurses see someone who they know is on day seven, what is the, what would be, I really don't know, what would be the issue with this?
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably the, you know, the one person who really could, but as you just said yourself, they're, they're not walking, because of the nature of the job, they're not walking around the building too much.
Of course.
Yeah, and then also, of course, in our nurses offices or health, health offices, masks are still required. So anyone who's coming in is definitely gonna have a mask, so, but, but that's really the only person who may know, um.
There's also another requirement for parents to tell the nurse that their kid's COVID positive.
True, I think we've had, I mean, I don't know for sure, it's hard to know, but I think we've had, you know, pretty good rapport of this.
Yeah, I mean, I hope so.
Yeah.
You know, I guess, somebody could be out with lots of cases.
Yeah, absolutely, right, yeah. It's right, if, if, we, we would also check, we always, always do check if you have extended absence, but, um, you know, so. But I think, I think, yeah.
Some terms of like, um, communication to classrooms, and I, this is not just COVID related. I know in some of, um, the elementary school classrooms at West Garage, the nurse or somebody would email an entire class if there was like so many cases of influenza, for example. Is that like a protocol that we have, or is that just kind of the school nurse?
Vise, strep, flu, I think, perhaps, you know.
So they do say.
No, so we're not doing that now, I mean, we, we may be doing it, it, hit or miss now, it used to be a regular practice.
Right.
I, when we started having COVID, you know, start here, uh, I think we started to reconsider that approach. Because obviously with COVID, we never, you know, told classrooms, that sort of thing, and, and so I think something we gotta think more about going to next year.
Yeah.
Because then often, obviously, for a long time, we had none, none of those, right? Now, of course, they're back, right? So, um, but there really is, um, we sort of have to balance the health and safety versus the individual, individual's privacy. You know, so I think that's what we have to, that, that's, I think it became more, through COVID, became more where, um, those circumstances of the individual privacy. You know, that, that might supersede, you know, the, the desires.
I'm just gonna push back on that a little bit, because I do think that the overall health of the classroom needs to supersede, not necessarily privacy, but like, we now know that masks do help, right? So as a parent, if I know that there's three cases of influenza in my kid's class, I might say to my kid, I want you to mask for the next five days. Do you know what I mean? We have, we have more tools at our disposal, but if I don't know that there is flu going around my kid's class, and I'm knowingly sending them in there, knowing that I could be giving them a tool to help keep them safe. And it's problematic, I think it needs to be a consistent approach, just because not every classroom is getting this seen.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree that it needs to be a consistent approach.
Yeah.
But just even what you said there is, is, you know, in many ways, more, uh, information or more commonly accepted information, you know, or more commonly known information, I should say, than, than we used to use before. A person who has a child who has something, vise, something else, you know, strep, uh, may feel differently about privacy. Or worried about it, I don't, and so, so I'm just saying that I hear you, and I'm not, I'm just saying that some of it needs to look at.
Yeah.
Because I think, but things have really shifted on, or broad, let's say, on, on, on that, on that approach. But we haven't resolved it yet, and haven't, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking on it yet, at all. But I think all of that is important, um, including, as you mentioned, that, I mean, you know, uh, if, if things return the way, you know, sort of seasonal illness has worked around here for many, many years. You know, I realize, I said before, I really hope that mask wearing will become, you know, more widely accepted. Because we do know, I mean, one thing, I'll guarantee, it's, there'll be influenza in schools next year, you know.
There has been this year.
Yeah, no, right, exactly, right, right, they'll be, they'll be common goals, right? And so, anyway, so what our role is in that, and what families' role is in that, in terms of, you know, just using mask wearing as an example. You know, I think is, is, uh, something we really gotta, um, think through and then, um, you know, I think, like, it'd be consistent, so. But yeah, I think it's more, more. No, I mean, just, it's, oh, oh, that, oh, yeah, yeah, on that specific, yeah, yeah. Well, good, because it is interesting, because it really just sort of, not just we, but the sort of light sliders, that's something very common across all sorts of schools, you know, it's sort of the way we did things. And I think that, I think that's, that awareness has shifted now, so. That's, that's just no different, so.
I guess I'm curious also, but like, if somebody were to say there's three cases of influenza in your class, and they're not getting any personal information. You're still identifying kids in the class, though.
The, 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 the challenge there is.
And.
Do you narrow it down enough that people start looking around and pointing fingers? It is really, it's really.
Yeah, I'm just gonna panic, I'll send my kids to school, there's five kids in the classroom, there's influenza, you're not going to school.
Right, but, but I guess another question, can, is there a way we can communicate about it in a way, because we certainly did, it's COVID. Remember, you know, got letters, every time there was a positive case in the school, came nowhere near identifying anybody, but people got the information that they can make a choice for themselves.
Right.
You know, so, so I think that's the way we would like to go, is provide information where we're sure we're protecting whose privacy, but giving families information where they can act on it and choose to.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just not sure yet what that is.
Well, and maybe in Sam's example, maybe it's a general communication to our school.
Right.
And say, it's food season, we have, we have some kids with food.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That, that way, there's, you know, two hundred eighty kids, particularly.
Yeah, yeah.
And somebody may also like, consider their kids sniffle a little bit more seriously, if they know that influenza is going to hit the school.
Right, right.
Versus if they don't, right, they might look at that symptom in a different way.
We ever had a year that influenza hasn't gone to school?
No, last year.
Well, because, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the first year, right?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Because everybody was wearing masks for a home and all that, you know.
The, the, of COVID, and then also, as we know, I mean, this is ironic, right, looking back at last year, right? I mean, this is really ironic, right? Like, last year was probably the healthiest year we've ever had in our schools.
Right.
Certainly in terms of COVID, much healthier last year than it was this year. You know, we, you know, so, so, just.
And I think the pandemic, because we're in pandemic status, allowed a lot of information to flow, right? But now that COVID's here, and not going away, it's, it's like, gonna be like the flu, you know, I don't think we're gonna be tracking COVID like we have forever. You know, this pandemic will come to an end, COVID will still be here, probably beyond something else, hopefully a lot less.
Good.
But I don't know that all this notification of illnesses is gonna be part of the norm.
Let me just share one, one more update, um, because, because getting back to, you know, getting to, you know, think how things are changing, so. Another update from the state today, and this is also just very new, so I'm just giving a sort of high level summary of it, a little overview of the, this is copied from their memo today about testing for next year. So you can see the, you know, the surveillance testing on the top, both, that's the pool and self-test, symptomatic testing. This is if a child came into the nurse's office during school day and said, I'm not feeling well, and be testing that point. And then also, this bottom column, row, rather, is just all the support that the state, you know, provided the districts, okay, all, all for your, for your charge. So where we are now, they, you know, we're, we're continuing all these till the end of the school year. Summer, things start to change, but really, look, if you look at fall, basically, everything ends, okay? There's no state program support for ending the testing in the fall, there will not be, I mean, we can purchase, or, so all our tests this year will be free, we can, we have the option to purchase them next year. Just, you know, important how they're available, I don't mean to make fun of that, and then C I C, the, the state program of support, which is all the, we've had testers in our schools every day, we've had, you know, you know, I mean, that's really what folks have done. And a lot of them, uh, have been tremendously helpful, again and again, every day. That all goes away, meaning the state is saying, at this point anyway, that, um, uh, not necessary, we, they don't think it necessary, they'll be. But we'll, but we'll take, again, brand new information, we'll take this and understand what we, uh, will or will not do, I think, work on that in the coming months. And also, I, it's likely that if things change in COVID, this will change too. So I just wanted to give you updates.
It could be that we get a vaccine going when you get added to the list, you know.
Right, I'd like, I'd like.
Something like that might be coming.
Yeah, so, no idea, but, um, anyways. Anyway, just, um, just again, this is the latest news on the state, these are the two most important pieces, um, just looking forward a little bit here. We will maintain the testing, um, uh, the symptomatic testing, um, for students. And, um, I believe also, I thought self, uh, the self-test through the summer as well.
So, those two pieces don't really add up in my mind, yeah. Who, who put out that last, uh, C I D?
No, this is just, this is just for the, this is just for the end of the year, end of the school year.
Right, no, I'm saying continuing into the fall, they're not gonna be supporting testing, so in my mind, that means that they don't think it's that important going forward to, to support that process.
I, I, I wouldn't draw any, infer anything, maybe the incentives are drawing, about why they're making, I don't know.
Who, who is this again?
This is, this is the State Department of Education, uh, Education and Health, and Executive Office of Health and Human Services.
Similar to the last slide.
Same, exact same, exact same.
Right, so.
But, but, but another way of looking at this is, is that perhaps, again, we were both speculating, okay?
Yeah.
That they think that COVID will not be enough of an issue, that we need these protocols in place, okay?
We also can get federal, free tests from the federal government, so maybe this chair and, you know.
Right, but maybe they're also aware of something that the federal government's working on, I really don't know.
Yeah, so I, I don't, um. For one thing, I, I'm wondering where this current slide here, where, um, no, the previous slide, that is. What, what's changed for them to change their policy, is there new information that you, that you've seen?
I, as I said, I, I, I was not on the webinar that you presented.
Okay.
But I can share the information with all of you in terms of their slides, that sort of thing, and, and, uh, and so you can look into it.
Yeah.
Look at it, um, and I think they have a recording of the, of the webinar as well, and typically, when they may change, they talk about the rationale, I'm just not, I'm not gonna loop myself. Yeah.
But they don't provide a fact sheet of, like, hey, this is, this is happening.
I, I, I'm, I'm giving you one fraction, which was, which I felt was the most significant changes you should be aware of, which is one right now and one looking at, looking down the road, and something that, obviously, our testing this year has been hugely important, um, and then, and these are significant changes going next year in terms of.
Yeah.
So, so.
I, I, I'm looking at the graphs, you know, from cases, I haven't seen any concerning upticks, I mean, there's that slight flip. Seems like removing the mask mandate hasn't caused any issues now. I mean, even, you know, suggesting that the wear masks seem to be working is fine, and then they changed.
Well, I, I would disagree strongly that masks haven't made a difference.
No, I'm saying.
Since, 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 just to be clear, since we took masks off, the level of, of colds, illness, flu, um, in our schools is something, I haven't since, that's the guy here, honestly, you know, so, so.
Well, you could also attribute that to distancing, proper hygiene, education.
Nothing has changed in the school.
No, I'm just saying that there was just greater awareness of these things and other, other practices that we were employing at the same time.
You couldn't, you couldn't just, I. All right, so, um, so just an update on this, this is, um, so, um, jump ahead, you've seen this before, this is just a summary of my goals, um, so. So, we had to, um, needed to revise the process, the timeline process because of the work we're, we're trying to get done to the students, uh, to the school committee meetings, all right? So working with the chair, Kathy, and I decided to move my hours to the twenty second, um, so this is a, it's a revise, and also I was having, um, so, and also this is a revised schedule. Tonight, I'm sharing with you, um, the, I'll show it to you, let me just go through the schedule first, so tonight, you're getting. Yeah, so you should have from Kathy already, evaluation rubric and document, and template, rather, template, um, to use in the evaluation. I'm providing tonight, uh, the, all the evidence towards my goals, I'll show that to you in a second. Um, and then about two weeks for you folks to, um, review the evidence and complete the evaluation rubric. Uh, June eighth, uh, submit that to the committee chair, we'll check in any, any questions about process two weeks from now. Um, and then, um, June seventeenth, the chair will produce a report, um, aggregating, uh, all the individual reports, and then that will be reviewed publicly and discussed publicly, uh, June twenty second. So let me just share one other thing here, so I can. Do, those adjust, those timelines can be, that timeline can be adjusted, for any concerns.
So in terms of process, while you're looking for that, um, we also, um, discussed that we should have a personnel meeting the following week after the evaluation to, um, discuss the super credit contract. And, um, a, you know, salary the week after, so we, uh, we're thinking Monday for personnel, also twenty seven. And then a special school committee meeting for a one item agenda to discuss the super credit contract.
You're saying a personnel meeting on June twenty seven?
Do you wanna do it after Unit A? Well, there.
So, so what you'll get from me tonight is, uh, this document, uh, I'll share with you a folder, there's all the evidence in it, but this is sort of the guide to that. Uh, you can see it's pretty well, it is basically, um, there is a section for each goal. And, uh, and, yeah, and this is similar to what you have, actions and then evidence, which is what I show here, and here now is links to folders or documents that are used in evidence, okay? It's, it's, Stephanie, like, guys, very well organized. And then another version of that, that's right, just show this to you.
Did you send this to us separately, or do we have to?
I will, I, you know, I'll, I know, I'll send this to separately. Oh, wait, is it, and there's a, there's a Google Drive folder as well, uh, you see that, right? There's it there, these are the documents you'd need for the evaluation, and then this folder has all the evidence by the goals, okay? So you should be able to sort that through, if you have any questions along the way, I'll, I'll.
You've already shared that?
Uh, no, I'm sure Stephanie.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
In case you guys don't look at it tonight.
Thanks, thank you.
I think we're all set on my, for me to see, yeah, that's all.
Just, can I just say one thing to the two members? I found this process, um, a little daunting last year, um, so I don't know, I guess I'm just saying, like, reach out, ask for help. It's, it's a lot. And it's important, it's like, probably the most important part of our job, so.
Uh, Kathy. Kathy did, um, tried to press Bobby not to put as much evidence as last time, mostly did that, not entirely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just because, you know, if you have evidence that supports, you don't need.
Lots and lots of.
Twenty more of them.
Right, yeah, no, I, I think. I think it, well, you can tell. Yeah, that's, that's all set for them.
Anything less than four hundred pages is great. We usually get.
No, I think, I think.
That's the best, that was the best.
Yeah, I think it'll be, it's pretty well enough, so.
Okay, um, thank you for that. We look on the subcommittee reports, and they were two building and finance subcommittee meetings on May eighteenth and May twenty third. Your personnel sub. Yeah, um, on May eighteen, we met, we, the meeting was about an hour and a half, it was a great meeting, because we talked about a new potential project that is in the works for our schools, which is the accelerated MSBA window and door replacement. It is in the works for our schools, which is the accelerated MSBA window and door replacement at the O'Malley School. So we met with um two people from a group called Left Field, it was Tim Baker, who has been assigned by the MSBA as the O P M, the project manager. And James Richdale, I believe was the name, he's the project director. And also Anne Keen joined us from an architect firm called Civitec, who's the architect that MSBA appointed to um this project as well. Um we had a great conversation, we learned that an accelerated project does not mean a quick project, it means that MSBA did part of the part of the hiring for us, usually, as you know, when we build schools, we had to do the hiring of the architect and the um O P M, but MSBA did it for us, and that's why it's called accelerated. You know, because the program is short, even though it will be. Um the project budget, uh any project that is, has a value of over one point five million dollars requires a project manager, and that is why we have one. Because this project is in the range of three to four point five million. Um overall, with a fifty to sixty percent reimbursement rate from the state, so. Um I think that gets us to about one to two point five million. Once if we are approved for this. And the O P M acts as the gatekeeper to the project, as you know, we are currently in the schematic design phase. And um the project will happen next year over the summer, not this summer. Uh again, the project's to be three to point, three to four point five million. And hopefully, we get more of that sixty percentage reimbursement from the state, I know the city's probably hoping for that as well. Um the schedule. Just that currently, we're in the schematic design, where they're getting prices and costs. Um on June twenty seven, the schematic design will be submitted to the MSBA, so that's coming up quickly. Um MSBA meets on August thirty first, and they will decide whether yes or no, whether the project will go forward. Um we've been told that pretty much every project that goes forward to the MSBA has been approved, but there is that slight chance that it may not be. Um two weeks after that, an approval package will be sent to the city. Um where we will, um they will work together to talk about approving the financing, and I believe that has to be done within thirty days of getting that package, if I remember correctly. September to November, they'll be finalizing the design, executing a funding agreement with MSBA. December through June of two thousand twenty three, there'll be some bidding, awarding of contracts, proceed notices will be issued, window fabrication will be happening. Um they've come to the determination that right now, it takes about twenty weeks to get these windows. They are custom, but they're common custom type windows, they just pretty much have to put them together. And then July and August of two thousand and twenty three, the demolition will be happening, abatement if that's needed, and then installation of the windows and other construction. After that, when the project is expected to be finished, from September twenty three through February two thousand twenty four, there could be some minor construction to to fit things that may not have been done right at first, and then they close out the project. Um the windows and the doors that they're replacing are over fifty years old. There is a large um blast type dome window in the library, they're still speculating whether that's gonna be part of the project. Um it's kind of a unique um big dome, but I think it needs, I don't know that it's um holding the air, the cold air out as good as we would want it to, even though it looks great. Um this project will trigger some A D A requirements, which will be placed for the main entrance of the school. It then involves drinking fountains and a public bathroom that's already been identified that might need a little bit of work. Um at the same meeting, we talked about result revolving funds, and Bill Melvin learned about revolving funds and how they carry a balance into the next year, because he's asking great questions. Um revolving funds that included were the food service, athletics, school choice, and circuit breaker. Um these accounts retain the money as the year changes into the next year, and the CFO, oh Gary's not here tonight.
He was.
He's he's on the roll, he's on the roll.
He reported that the balances, there'll be balances in all the accounts, and we're looking good going into fiscal two thousand twenty three, which is in July first. Um we also discussed and reviewed the over tickets that we do publicly each month. Um that's the system where the staff and can report building issues, damages, and concerns. Of the six pages that were presented, five of those pages, which is a lot, there's a lot listed on each page. Um have been completed by the D P W in the past thirty days, so great job for D P W. We have one page left, um and there's only three items that are over thirty days old. So D P W has been doing a ton of work, and we commend them for that. Um we approved some, the balance, some transfers, which are in our packet tonight, which was basically just to um balance out some accounts and prepare for the end of year procedures. Um so that information is in the packet. We also met this following, I mean, this past Monday for a special B and F meeting. Um we met with preschool director Anne Marie Jordan, is that her title, preschool director? Thought she had a different title, can't remember. Um she presented us with a new program that increases hours to um have a longer day for our preschoolers, and I, are we getting this presentation tonight? It's in our packet.
In your packet, I can do the presentation, why don't you?
I just wasn't gonna talk too much about it, because the information is on, in there, so I didn't wanna be duplicitous. Uh yes, been talked about, and then we got a presentation on presentations in the packet, yeah, this was about the two issues. So what they, what, one of the um goals is, is um they're expanding um and making a four hour day, five days per week. They had surveyed the parents and found that there was a great interest in that um type of um program to be uh more than the two and a half hours I think they were having. Uh so that presentation's in our packet, which gives a lot of information. Um we did do a vote that is on our agenda tonight, um to approve the new fees, because that hours are being bumped up. Just want to point out that um it's important to note that they did a cost analysis, and the per hour cost of the program is not changing, the fees are just going up because we added more hours. So um when you see the um increase in the rate, it's because of the increase in the hours, it's still the same rate per hour. Um after we took that vote, um we discussed, we, we're having an ongoing conversation about the building use of the community use policy, procedures and fees. Um we received some draft copies, but updates from the administration, administration, done some good work on this. Um making, um as we make decisions and changes to this policy. Um we're just about there on our policy and procedures, and we just need a good conversation about the fees and where we wanna go with that. Um because I think there's a lot of interest in um who should pay and when and how, why. Those type of conversations will happen at our next meeting. But um those that meetings ours into, if anyone wants to watch it and see our actual conversations, but I think we're getting close to the end with that. And um hope to bring it forward. Maybe before we break in July, I'm not sure, if not, we have a lot going on in June, so I don't wanna put any pressure, it might not be until August.
Oh.
But we'll see.
Yeah, and we'll see, because we did, we did discuss, perhaps bring it back to the regular B and F meeting in June.
Oh, yeah, exactly, but I mean, by the time we get to this committee, if we're not.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 that's right.
But there's a lot of work being done, and I think um
Yeah.
all can agree, it will represent all that we all wanna see in a great policy for that um that provides great resources for the kids in our community.
Um just a question, because I was hearing buzz around the bus stop, that so there's no longer a full day at the preschool for next year? That's what I'm seeing, so there used to be, there was a six hour day?
It was broken up into two, um a morning and then an afternoon, I thought, I didn't see it. So it was six hours, Monday through Thursday, they're going to a model of um four hours, Monday through Friday. That was the same on that, an hour.
Starting a day, but no.
Sure.
Getting this question a fair amount, because it does, the parents who are working, you know, it's obviously a big impact, so. I just wanted to clarify that that is in fact what's happening, we are going to shorter days, just more of adding a day.
Right, so 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 um there there is, there is very limited number of of the full days, one of those fully classes right now, okay?
Okay.
So it's, that's not the norm.
Okay.
Okay, um so, yeah, and and um yeah, there's only one, and it's four hour, four days.
Four days.
Four days per week on a Thursday, and it's one of the classes. The the norm by far and away is the two and a half hours per day, either morning or afternoon. You you don't, you don't do both necessarily.
Okay, so this is.
Some some students do, but but other other um students, uh especially students with disabilities who are, you know, who are programmed, so.
Okay.
It's not like we're going from, you know, the 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 vast majority of offering the six hour day, we're moving on forward, that's not the case.
Okay, in fact, it's the opposite.
Right, and we are really literally expanding in the the um, I mean, really going from two and a half hour chunks to to four hour days um for most of the students.
But didn't Anne Marie?
And five, sorry, five is.
This is just an important message um
Yeah.
to be putting out there, because, you know, as things go through the, you know, playing telephone, it doesn't always come out that way.
But I thought Anne Marie said that um on some of these days, there was time afterwards for specialists who were on high speeds, things like that.
Yeah, so.
So I don't know that this reflects all the hours, that would be for outpatient, that's how.
So no, so then you have, you have two other other pieces, and this is just for student disabilities, is you have
Yeah.
um you have a Friday, sort of initial services that can happen. Um uh you, I'm sorry, there are a couple of options where they have a longer day, okay? And then you also have um another option for services on Friday.
Right.
Yeah, so you have your four, four, one of our four day a week classes, okay, but you also get services on Friday.
But can, I thought the four day, five days a week, they still could get services after that.
They can, they can, but the reason you're not discussing those today is those are, those are tuition free.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering if that falls into the six hours, maybe not for parents, and that's why I didn't understand it.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh certainly, the best way to get answered on that is to call it preschool. And folks, anyone who has that concern or, you know, wants some more information concerning, and Kristen, uh Denzie or Anne Marie will um, you know, will happy to talk to folks, make sure they understand.
Right, because they teach a day isn't over after four hours, you know, I mean, there's still, there's still education going on.
Yeah, so so this is, so just another piece on this, I mean, obviously, we want to offer five is a week for families, we think that's, you know, generally better for families, and we, as we've heard from them. Um uh we've been, with the four days a week, you had um, you know, if you think of it, of it, it's sort of eight, three, eight to two thirty teaching day. Uh for any, for any, you know, teacher in general, however, later you go, but any, any, any school. Within that, within that work day that a teacher has, okay? By the agreement between the school committee and the, and the teachers association, you have to uh put in a couple of things, break, lunch, and, you know, prep, prep, planning time. Which is different across, depending on which grade they learn. At the preschool, because they didn't have that built in Monday through Thursday, they didn't have that time of the lunch, the break. They got all their planning time, prep time on Fridays, okay? What we're able to do now is by having a four hour day, then have their planning, prep, five days a week, for most of them, you have, you have built in the planning and prep time during, during the day. Um so that's why you can't, in order, if you went for a six, seven, or eight hour day, of course. You have to have a lot more staff to build in all the breaks while the students are there. So um that that might make sense.
I just thought I heard it differently, but that makes sense.
Yeah.
I thought she said there were services afterwards, although I didn't think that it was over four hours.
No, so, no, no, so so set, additional, what I just said, and that's why we have, you know, a four hour day, five is a week, you know, or or, you know, but but then there are services for person with disabilities um in a variety of offerings on top of of what I just tried.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but again, you're not seeing those tonight, because they're not tuition based.
Right, they provide a lot of outpatient services after the school hours.
And for those who are all too, absolutely, yeah.
Know that the fees that were presented for approval tonight, um there is an ability, if you have free reduced lunch, that you could go with tuition free or a reduced tuition, like you would, like you qualify with lunches, so those fees aren't necessarily for everyone.
And that's likely something that we'll do uh, you better job on, because we'll integrate that with our process on, in terms of identifying free, free or free, um lunch families, I think that was, the economic expansion, sorry. Um and uh in a more systematic way than we, like we do at the K through twelve, we'll apply the preschool. But I think it's also, I remember that we're expanding the number of classrooms, so we're going from one classroom to four classrooms, Monday through Friday. Yeah, yeah, so that's a big.
And they surveyed the parents, and this was the need, so I, it's great. I um I'm assuming those parents know that this is coming because they forgot the survey.
Well, when, when, just just to put this in perspective, when, when not only myself and, you know, and Katie Bro and Anne Marie talked earlier in the year, and then from the priority, bunch of our presentation, the the B and F committee really then asked and pushed, you know, you know, about, you know, additional moving over a five a schedule, I I was really anticipating we might have a couple of classes, you know, just go from, you know, send you, you know, zero to two. But they worked out, and staff has been very supportive, and so we're going to four, and may go more, you know, in the future. But so this is a, I mean, a significant change, and and then certainly, you know, I tried to push pretty hard, but, you know, more than I would expect, honestly. So I'm pretty pleased with that, or that, you know, Anne Marie and staff and Katie Bro and.
So that being said, it was recommended and unanimously voted by the B and F, um that the school committee approved the preschool tuition rates as presented.
So move, sure.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, so just to clarify, um as well as said, basically, this is just proportional changes to the tuition based upon the hours that are that are available, so it's not an increase in rate, it's just um a shift in the way the hours are, that families definitely supported this particular structure, and it was, I think, much better educationally, kind of advancement in how families are serviced as well. Okay, uh maybe we have a little bubble?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
Chairperson Plansey?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. Massively, unanimously, um this last item of action is an acceptance of grant from Gloucester Education Foundation in the amount of sixty five thousand, six hundred dollars to create its four through eight for music instruction. That question?
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
I'm just, I'm just.
No, no, it's real, real gracious.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's hope so.
This is gonna be really good.
Good for my son next year.
I think this, I, my mind is, this is, I mean, they've brought a lot of funding this year, to get us back off the ground, this, so it's, and then I do know that um, which man is, uh leads the um O'Malley Band is a huge part, it's honest, the boss is very excited, just like um, this Kirk, I understand, was, you know, working out, you know, talent coming up. He's the same way, so it's really a big.
Okay, here we go, please.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
Chairperson Plansey?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Okay, um chair, are we doing the second meeting on the attendance policy?
We are, oh, sorry, we are tabling the attendance policy till the next meeting. So have a few more edits before we discuss. Okay, and and the action, and um the last item is um update on the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building.
Uh the one thing I might add is that um, now for a couple of months now, we can run weekly updates on this, on the, on the website every every week, you can get through some links around the site. They did a concrete pour today, that's still be going on, so it's been three, three days. Uh where they've extended work hours, today is one of them, if you wanna go by and watch and finish up that, you can. But uh, and then um, uh small interiors group met today, and we uh finding colors for the ceilings and soffits and extended learning areas, that's exciting. And uh also just got the first, first initial timeline on uh what they call F F N U, which is furniture.
Thanks.
Fixtures and equipment, and so uh that process of identifying furniture, and also things like staplers begins in the fall.
And that process will include um teachers.
Yes.
Furniture teachers to actually have in the classrooms for a couple of weeks, so they can um have in person, um the previous project had a, what they call a furniture fair, and I think we did that. Maybe, where did we do it, O'Malley? They brought in a bunch of furniture, and teachers went, now there's one, I looked. They think this process will be better, where um we'll visit a couple of schools, few schools, and um see what they have, teachers can um you know, figure out what they might wanna try out, and then the things will be brought for a couple of weeks. So instead of just looking at it, sitting on it, saying, oh, we.
So instead of just looking at it, sitting on it, saying, I mean, it's comfortable, and then in your house, they're like, no, that's not comfortable at all. They'll be able to see how it works in the classroom.
But it's gonna be brought to their.
To, to, um, East Gloucester and veterans.
To their current spaces.
To their learning spaces as a trial.
Oh, cool.
So that they then, to what they want.
I just have a question, turn down that. When do we, um, vote the name of the school?
Oh, so, um, the nominations committee, uh, I believe.
I mean, I read about it and I know what, no, I just wanna go to the table.
Yeah. Oh, um, we had an update, we had an update when you weren't here.
Oh, maybe that's what I watched, when I watched it.
Yeah, yeah, and then, then just, so just give you an update, a further update. Um, so the nominations committee, I think it was meeting with alumni group today. They're meeting with Adam Cook group next week, possibly, I'm not sure, sure, you may be bringing a couple of veterans, um. Uh, so they can get input from both those groups before they narrow it down to semifinalists. And then, uh, once they do that, they'll, uh, continue working on, um, presentations about those things, uh, ready to come up with. If, you know, it could be around ten, uh, and then, then we'll start sharing those publicly, um, so.
Like September?
Yeah, we were hoping to get it done, you know, to put it in front of you, um, this June is not gonna happen. Um, but probably we'll have the, maybe, maybe the, those ten, um, uh, before they end of school, if not, so it'll go into the fall. Um, but that'll be okay.
Yeah.
We are of that.
I'm not rushing that, I was just curious.
Yeah, but no, but they, um, uh, as we reported, um. The, the students are doing a fantastic job. They're just really, Amy was here, Amy and Matt, I think Amy and Matt were both here, uh, last meeting and, um, just were really pleased with what they're doing, how, okay, you know, seriously they're taking it.
Bringing in veterans, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, so, really want. Yeah, no, no, those are just, you know, two, we just, but, those, as we said, this is actually part of their initial plan. To have those two groups just, you know, um, probably freezing their connection to the two schools, right? Um, so, yeah, so they'll hear those perspectives.
Do we have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Maria?
Mia Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Thank you, good night. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody who attended.